Okay, it looks like we're ready to start. City Clerk, are we ready?
Yes, ready.
Great. Lost my gavel. Okay, I called to order this regular meeting of the City of Campbell's City Council on this Tuesday, November 17th, 2020. The regular council meeting is conducted via telecommunications and is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act and Executive Order N 2920 issued by the Governor. Currently Comcast and our city website are experiencing issues with the fiber optics lines and the service has been interrupted. Channel 26 is still available on AT&amp;T and U-verse customers. The meeting can also be viewed on YouTube. We have updated our website directing people to those two locations. All right, thank you. Roll call, please. Andrea?
Councilmember Waterman?
Here.
Councilmember Bybee? Councilmember Resnikov?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
Here.
Mayor Landry?
Here, thank you. I bow to the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have no special presentations or proclamations, but we do have communications from our city attorney. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor Landry. Yes, as the council is aware, in executive session prior to this meeting this evening, the council voted unanimously to authorize the city manager to execute a settlement agreement regarding the claim of Christian Scott. A copy of the settlement agreement will be available in the city clerk's office tomorrow.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is oral request. This is the portion of the meeting reserved for people wishing to address city council on any man or not on our current agenda. The public wishing to speak and participate can go through, I guess our link isn't working though. Sorry about that. Andrea, do we have anybody right now who wants to speak under oral requests? City Clerk?
Sorry about that, I was having unmute issues. We have Heidi Heckman who would like to speak.
Is she ready? Hi Heidi.
Hi there, it's all right. I don't need to speak, I'm good.
You sure?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, you got our full attention, you know.
That's all right, thank you.
Okay. So now we're going to have the council announcements.
Mayor Landry?
Yes.
We actually have one other person that may want to speak. Rajah, are you wanting to speak on this item?
Hi Rajah.
Hello?
Yes, hi. Is this an item on the agenda or open forum?
Item on the agenda.
It is, okay, so right now it's items not on the agenda.
Yeah, so I didn't raise my hand, so sorry.
Okay, so you can, we'll get back to you under that agenda item. All right, our mayor's announcement. The City of Campbell continues to work closely with the County of Santa Clara on our issues with the COVID. Hopefully, most of you have heard by now that the state has put us into the highest level of purple. This impacts a lot of functions regarding businesses' operations. So the new change is that you are allowed to have indoor activities but at reduced capacity. Grocery stores have a maximum of 50% capacity. Retailers are at 25% capacity. Shopping malls a maximum of 25% capacity. Common areas and food courts are to remain closed. What also now is enclosed indoors is dining inside, swimming pools that are for the public, gyms and fitness centers, gatherings including political events, weddings, funeral, and places of worship, family entertainment centers, wineries, card rooms, movie theaters, museums, zoos, and aquariums. If you need more information about the complete list and how the purple category is impacting us, please visit cdph.ca.gov. And I would also like to encourage and make sure that people are wearing their masks. City Hall will be closed Thursday, November 26th and Friday, November 27th in observance of Thanksgiving holiday, and we will reopen on Monday, November 30th. The city clerk is currently accepting applications for vacancies on our Parks and Rec Commission. To be eligible for the appointment on a voluntary commission, applicants must reside within the city limits and must be at least 18 years of age. For more information about our vacancies, please visit our website at campbellca.gov. Or you can contact our city clerk's office for more information. It's clerks, C-L-E-R-K-S, office, S-O-F-F-I-C-E, at campbellca.gov. The City of Campbell is partnering with the Santa Clara County to offer COVID-19 testing at the community center. It's available on Thursdays, the first and third Thursdays of the month. Excuse me. If you want to sign up and register, go to sccfreetest.org. All this heat is drying me out here. Get you and your family vaccinated with the flu vaccine. It's the first and most important step in protecting against flu viruses. The County of Santa Clara is offering free flu shots every Saturday from 9:00 to 4:00 through mid-December at the county fairgrounds in San Jose. For more information, go to scgov.org, and I will emphasize that these flu vaccines are free there. The Campbell Museum is reaching out to our community, asking for their insistence to document the COVID-19 pandemic. It is important to document this historic time. The museum will use these as primary sources for journals, texts, email, images, and videos to curate what the community and the world has been experiencing during this pandemic. Please visit campbellmuseums.com. On Wednesday, November 18th, from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m., the City of Campbell is proud to host a free homeownership webinar about the Empower Home Buyers SCC program with the County of Santa Clara's Housing Trust of Silicon Valley. Learn about this down payment assistance program and how it can help you become a first-time homebuyer in Santa Clara County. For more information, please visit housingtrustsv.org/empower. All of these websites that I'm giving you will be available tomorrow when our meeting minutes come out in case you haven't written down quick enough. The Campbell Chamber of Commerce is hosting their 36th Annual Campbell Community Toy Program this week. To date, almost 700 families have asked for assistance. The program provides gifts for students and family in the Campbell Union School District. For more information, visit campbelltoyprogram.com. While the holidays are a time to rejoice and have appreciation, the community matters are now more important than ever. San Jose Brannum High School is doing just that by making wishes come true for the students and staff. For the past 10 years, ASB students have asked every student and staff member to make a wish. The leadership class then sets out to grant as many wishes as possible through donations and generous contributions from families, companies, and individuals. Students wish for financial help for their friends and family, and others to wish a thank you to teachers and their coaches that have had a positive impact on students' life. The goal of the ASB students is to face these hardships and to support the students and staff. I wanted to share the story as it emphasizes what we can do as a community and embracing the idea of being kind to each other, especially during these ever challenging times. I'd also like to acknowledge we have several students from our local high schools. We have Prospect High School students that are listening tonight, welcome. We have students from Westmont High School, and we even have students from UC Davis that are participating tonight as part of their government classes. Welcome to all. Ends the mayor's announcements. At this point, we're on to the consent calendar. Is there anybody or council member that would like to pull an item from consent? Anne?
I don't want to pull the item, but I just want to acknowledge publicly and thank Yvonne Kendall for her service on the HPV board.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge and thank her also for her time. Anybody else wanting to pull an item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move consent items 1 through 4.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Waterman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye, that motion passes. Next on our agenda are public hearings and introduction of ordinances. This is where the item will be presented, and then members of the public are entitled up to two minutes to make comments during the public hearing portion of that item. The first item is number five of public hearing to consider the application PLN 2019-148 of Ropes &amp; Homes LLC for a zoning map amendment to rezone a project site to R16 to a planned development, well, there's a lot here, to allow construction of 28 homes and five dwelling units, a private street associated site parking and landscaping improvements. I will now introduce our senior planner, Daniel Farmer. Hi, Daniel.
Hi, good evening. Let me share my screen here. Right, so we do have a planned development rezoning and subdivision for a 25-lot planned development project. This is a property located on East Mozart Avenue, a little over three acres, located west of Bascom towards the city border with Los Gatos. The property borders single-family homes to the north and west and a medical office complex to the east. It currently is zone R16, single-family residential, with a low-density residential general plan designation. The property is currently approved with five homes along Mozart Avenue, but the majority of the land is undeveloped and largely fallow. The application has included zoning map amendment to change the zoning from R16 to PD that allows use of a private street and more flexible development standards, a planned development permit, which is the main development permit that allows construction of the 25 homes and five proposed ADUs, a density bonus that would allow an additional seven units in exchange for two below-market rate units, a vesting tend to subdivision map that allows a creation of 25 private lots and four common lots, a tree removal permit to allow removal of 17 protected trees, as well as a CEQA review to allow adoption of a mitigated negative declaration. Here we have the site plan. You have 25 lots surrounding a loop street that creates a small island in the middle and incorporates five properties here. The project does incorporate three park areas, one in the middle right here, Lot D, as well as two along the Mozart Avenue frontage, Lots C and Lot B. The Lots C Park that has a small tot lot may be provided as a private park with public access. And all the project would include 50 parking stalls that are covered. Those are in two-car garages, as well as an additional 20 uncovered parking stalls, mostly guest and a few dedicated stalls. And 24 of these lots would have private yards of varying sizes, an average size comparable to standard R16 zone properties. In terms of architecture, the homes are shown in several styles with variations in colors, materials, and features to minimize the cookie cutter appearance of large subdivisions. The city does not have any design guidelines for architectural design in this part of the city. However, the design is generally keeping with projects that have been historically approved in the past. With regards to tree preservation to removal, the project would maintain nine mature oak trees, as shown in that line with the green color. However, 17 other trees would be removed. Majority of these trees are either in proximity or within the footprint of the proposed homes or new roadway. This is an attempt to create a balance between retention of certain trees while allowing reasonable development of the property. With regard to the density bonus, as I mentioned, the proposal does include a proposal for two very low-income units. These would be units that would be sold for approximately $188,000 each. Just a quick rundown of the math. Those two units represent 10 and 1/2% of the 19 base units. The base units in this case is rounded up for the purposes of this calculation. That would result in a density bonus increase of 32.5% as requested by the applicant's affordable housing plan. Multiplying the 19 base units by the 32.5% results in seven bonus units, rounded up again. So we add the seven bonus units to what would normally be allowed if this were not a density bonus project of 18 units. Under normal rounding rules, we round down, so 18.9 would be rounded down to 18. So 7 plus 18 equals a total of 25 units. Now those 25, two would be the below-market rate units, and this does not, however, include the 5 ADUs, which are outside of this calculation. The applicant had initially proposed two attached units as constituting the below-market rate units. These would be the only attached units within the development in a duet format shown here at the top right. The planning commission had extensive discussion whether or not this proposal complied with the requirements of the density bonus ordinance that generally requires that below-market rate units be comparable in design configuration of your overall project and be distributed somewhat equally through the site. This proposal kind of conflicted with that requirement in that these were the only two attached units and a otherwise detached subdivision, and they would be right next to each other. Based on those concerns, the planning commission's recommendation was for one of the two duet units, either 19 or 20, at the applicant's preference, be a BMR, and the other unit would be, Lot 16, would be a detached unit, and that was the recommendation provided by the planning commission. Subsequently, the planning commission, however, based on some feedback that the applicant received from the commission, they did provide some preliminary revised materials that would actually separate the duet from this one structure into two detached units, resulting in a total project of 25 detached units so that the duet would no longer be incorporated here. This would resolve any concern regarding the applicability of that density bonus section since the BMRs would all both be detached, since the entire project would also be detached. If the city council is agreeable to the applicant's revised design, you can take action by adopting the alternative draft planned development permit ordinance included as attachment I. We do have a desk item, hold desk items regarding access to the private park. As I noted, the applicant's materials did offer public access to the private park. The first desk item was simply more of a technical correction, just to clarify that public access to the park would be taken along the Mozart frontage and not require individuals to actually access the site. This was holdover language from a previous version of the plans. More significance, however, is the applicant's second desk item memo having to do with obtaining insurance coverage for this park. The applicant submitted a letter indicating that they have had difficulty finding insurance for this type of private park that has public access and requesting that the council modify the condition to provide the developer or a future HOA the ability to relieve themselves of this obligation if they cannot find insurance at a reasonable cost. So as noted in the desk item memo that was provided earlier this afternoon, the council has four options to consider with this matter. You may maintain the condition as recommended by the planning commission, and that does require public access to that private park as originally offered by the applicant. If ultimately the applicant cannot find an insurance company that will provide a policy, or if in the future the HOA cannot maintain that policy due to cost or if it's canceled, they do always have the ability to submit a request to modify the approval and come back to the city council upon recommendation to the planning commission and ask to be relieved of that obligation at some point in the future. If the council feels that this whole process was unnecessary since the applicant was voluntarily offering this private-public access to the private park as a voluntary amenity, you may simply eliminate that condition. However, this may require some additional discussion that may be more appropriate for the planning commission before coming back to the council. The third option is to simply accept the applicant's revised wording. Again, this would allow the applicant or a future HOA to suspend access to the public, to the park, if insurance cannot be found. The language does, however, require the HOA to make a good faith effort every year to obtain coverage, so that decision would not necessarily be permanent. Lastly, the council always retains the ability to revise the condition language as you deem appropriate. In conclusion, the planning commission does recommend that the city council approve the project by taking action to approve the mitigated negative declaration under CEQA, the zoning map amendment, the planned development permit with the density bonus, the vesting map, as well as the tree removal permit. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so first we'll go, if the council has any questions, and then we'll go to the public hearing. Any questions? Anne?
So I just have a question regarding the park and the insurance requirement. And if council were to accept number three, which is the applicant's request, and they're not able to obtain the insurance and the access to the park wouldn't be allowed to the public, how would that be enforced? Is it up to the applicant to provide some kind of signage? How do they monitor whether members of the neighborhood are accessing the park or if it's a member of the public?
Well, it would require signage. I suspect that if ultimately the access is not provided to the public, they would need some sort of locking mechanism on the door or the gate to the park to ensure the public can't simply take access.
So it will be gated, is that...?
Yes, there's a split rail fence around it. I mean, it's not anything that would prevent someone who really wants to get in there, but it would make its own obvious, of course. Plus, it's a relatively small community, so I imagine that strangers would be visible.
Okay, thank you, Daniel.
Questions? Liz?
No one else has any? So I have some questions that are a little complicated. I'm thinking simple answers now, and we can cover them more detail in the discussion part. I did bring this to the attention of staff earlier yesterday, and I think last week as well. So I have four areas of discussion. One is the number of required EMR units, the requirement for a level of service analysis, as well as a VMT analysis, and where the units would go, and then also street trees and streetlights. So the big issue is, according to the applicant's submittal, the project ends up with eight units an acre. I should say, I had a lot of trouble making the numbers work, and I appreciate the help from staff to get the numbers to work. So it's very complicated, as you can see by Daniel's presentation, what's 18 and what's 19 and what's 7 and so forth. So I got through that, but when I looked at it, there is a paragraph in the inclusionary ordinance that states that, if, I'll try and read it here. "In lieu housing fee, where a residential project has an approved density of six or fewer units, the applicant may elect to pay an in lieu housing fee." And this applicant is proposing, that didn't come out in Daniel's presentation, I don't think, in lieu housing fee. And this project has eight units an acre, so I don't think they can use the in lieu alternative.
Very good observation. So that was actually a question that was asked of the city attorney last year because we did identify that. And I don't know if Bill wants to time in here, but his determination was that since the base density was within that density range of six units or less, that the ability for them to provide an in lieu fee still applied.
So at this point, it's a very difficult conversation to have, but the language is very clear. It says, "where a residential project has an approved density." It doesn't talk about baseline general plan density. It says an approved density, and the approved density on this project is eight units an acre. So, and I am going to fuss on it. I do think the language is clear that the in lieu fee should not be allocated or allowed. Then I will fuss on it because we are, by the process that the developer has selected, allowing seven additional market rate units. And all we're getting for that in terms of below-market rate rates. So the density bonus is set up specifically to provide a mechanism to get below-market rate units. And because of that mechanism, we are getting too low, low, or very low, I guess is how they say it, very low units. Okay, and that gets his formulas to work. The city has in housing inclusionary ordinance, and that is 15%, which would bring the requirement to three units. The density bonus law does not allow in lieu fee. Our inclusionary ordinance does allow an in lieu fee. And that's why the language here is really particular. So we're getting two units for his extra seven units, and we were going to get those two units anyway. So to me, this language, it was in here, in this phrasing, is very important. I think we should get a third unit, not an in lieu fee of, Daniel, what is it, $160,000, something like that?
$188,000.
$188,000. When we know a housing unit would be a million or a million and a half, so.
So what's the, so we're in question?
My question is, I'd like to hear from the city attorney. My question is, I'd like to hear from the city attorney. I, I don't see how he can make his conclusion.
Thank you. To address the vice mayor's comments, I think it depends on how you interpret the word approved. When I looked at it, I interpreted the word approved as meaning approved under the general plan, not as the project was ultimately approved, because normally you don't consider bonus units when you're making a consideration with regard to any of the other applicable elements of your zoning code.
We'll talk about it more during the discussion. I appreciate, I appreciate the answer. My next question is, we are using the VMT method for the environmental review. That makes perfect sense, vehicle miles traveled. But with the PD, with the transition to PD, so a reference to analyzing the traffic impact of the project on the surrounding streets and neighborhood. And I didn't anything, if I missed it, I didn't see anything that spoke to the fact, because we know from the first public hearing back in two thousand nineteen that there is significant traffic congestion on Mozart and its single way in and out. And I was surprised that there was no or addressing of that.
So as part of the CEQA review, there was a traffic study that was performed. It did not incorporate a comprehensive level service analysis because the project didn't trip the thresholds established by the VTA one hundred new trips.
Which I'm agreeing with.
But it did look, the consultant did look at the relationship of Mozart and Bascom Avenue to see to what extent any alterations to the intersection configuration could be made. And ultimately, their recommendation was to leave it as is. And we do have the traffic consultant, the city's traffic consultant in attendance, and he can provide greater detail on those points.
I would appreciate it because it, I have been there a lot. It is a major problem.
Sure.
Do we? Do you want to have it as a question or wait till we have a discussion?
Well, it's, I believe it belongs in this part of the question. I wanted, I wanted to understand why we aren't addressing that intersection, which is going to be impacted by substantive amount of new, new cars as part of our
So we have the traffic engineer.
Chris, can you? Perfect.
Hi, Chris.
Hi, I'm Chris Kinsel with TJKM Transportation Consultants. We were asked to review this project on behalf of the city. We look at that intersection. It's a, it's a, is a busy intersection because of the proximity of the freeway and the ramps. And it's an unusual intersection because it's so close to the, to the freeway ramps. And as, as we looked at it, we were asked to evaluate various alternatives for that intersection, such as allowing left turns out of the intersections or allowing left turns into the intersection or various other alterations that might improve conditions. What we found was because of that, those two locations being so close together, that it was not appropriate to allow left turns in, left turns out, and that those movements that had to be made would have to be made by making U-turn movements, either coming in by going down the street and then making a U-turn coming back, or in the, in, in leaving and wanting to make a left turn, you'd go down across the freeway and take the ramp interchange and make a U-turn there. There were no other, yes, it's a busy intersection, but there were no other alternatives that, that we were able to ascertain, but we didn't find that the project with the small number of units had a minimal impact on the congestion at that location.
So I mean, the project's going to come close to doubling the number of cars exiting in the morning. It's hard to judge now because not everybody's leaving home for school and work at the same time. But it's been a backup at that on Mozart. So this project is going to exacerbate that backup and challenge it. The, the project always has the right out, which always requires the U-turn down at the signal, down at, at the south end of the highway eighty-five. And people leaving Mozart have to cross through the backup waiting for the turn onto eighty-five as well as the through traffic. And then there's double lanes of left turns to make the U-turn. It's a massive gauntlet to get across to do the U-turn.
That's true. Most of that problem is associated not with the Mozart traffic, but, but with all the rest of the traffic on the, on the street and in the interchange itself.
Agreed, but the Mozart people have to navigate it. So did you move the signal and putting a, a no, a no, keep clear zone, anything like that?
Well, a keep, a keep clear zone might be useful there, but I'm not sure that would solve the problem with the, with the backup that exists because that would, and we could look further at that, but I think that would allow the the Mozart motors to clog up the intersection further. They often, they almost just have to wait until the traffic starts moving and then enter traffic carefully.
Well, I must say, we can talk about that later. All right, and I'll, I'll wait for the other comments because they're more of discussion relating to entries and which units become ADU units.
Okay. We do have Heidi, who did want to speak on this item. She just sent a note under chat that she actually had questions for the traffic engineer. Bill, are we allowed to have her ask questions or just give us input?
That, that is up to you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, let me see, Andrew, oh, Rich?
This is just somebody from the public. I mean, we don't typically, otherwise it's going to get complicated. They can't ask a question, they can give us comments, and then we can, then to ask specific people as a council. It would be somebody from the public specifically ask either for somebody else.
Okay, I see Paul raising his hand. Paul.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, as of the city council. Yeah, typically, this is the time for Q and A with the, regarding the staff report. And then we'll have the applicant present, and then it'll be open to the, the regular public, at which time then, you know, Ms. Heckman can ask questions.
Not, not, not ask questions, she gets to comment. We can take it and staff can get back to her with an answer.
Okay, so let's hear from the applicant first. And we have both Brian Smith and Mark Robson. You have five minutes combined between the two of you. And then we'll do public comments.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Richard Yee. I work for Robson Homes. As you know, back in February two thousand nineteen, you approved our request to pursue a general plan amendment for this site. We proceeded, and at the planning commission study session, we were directed to pay more trees and create more open space, ambitious goals for a small site. It took tremendous effort to create our plan that the planning commission unanimously approved last month. We are excited to share this with you tonight. You can take a look at the first slide. This is what our project will look like along Mozart Avenue. We wanted to create a special neighborhood by using great architecture, providing more open space and saving more trees. Next slide, please. So from the aerial, you can see that this is an infill site. And so obviously, integration into the neighborhood, very important to our design. We focused on preserving the land use patterns. So for example, homes along Mozart face their neighbors. Our rear yards face neighbors, rear yards along Kilmer and Beethoven. So let me show you what I mean. Next, please. But currently, there are no public improvements along the project frontage. There's no sidewalk, no landscaping, parking. And you can see that the oak trees are impacting along Mozart Avenue. Next. So you can see how well we, we fit in by preserving the land use pattern. So front doors along Mozart face their neighbors across the street. Our rear yards adjacent to Beethoven and Kilmer face their rear yards. We have created open space around the oak trees that we're saving. And we have a new public sidewalk in Mozart connecting to neighbors on both sides. So we're saving the best trees on site. We provided three open spaces adding up to over eleven thousand square feet. And to accommodate the additional trees and open space, we created eleven different homes for twenty-five lots. So that's twenty-three market rate homes and two very low income BMRs, including five ADUs. And the five ADUs can provide a source of income as rentals, and they are recognized by the state as affordable housing. This is a great community benefit. Next slide. So as Daniel noted, although the planning commission approved our project, we didn't want to address staff's concern that the duet BMR was not comparable to the market rate units. So we, we replaced the duet with two single family homes. Next, please. These are pictures of Robson Homes, and, and they illustrate the architectural design quality craftsmanship and detailing that you can expect for this project. Next. We create great neighborhoods. So we offer abundant landscaping, pedestrian friendly, they're attractive homes. We have large functional porches providing eyes on the street and promoting neighbor interaction. In summary, next slide, please. In summary, this is a great looking project. It offers lots of open space. We're preserving the key street, key trees, and it provides a great level of affordability. We're building two very low income, they're four bedroom, single family homes in addition to the five ADUs. So we hope you will agree with the planning commission and support our project tonight. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer your questions, including the desk item regarding the public access to the top line.
Great, thank you. You made it right on the five minutes. Can you take down your slide for me? Thank you. At this point.
I could just quickly clarify just one point. The ADUs are not affordable units in this project. They are market rate units.
Yes, I was going to make that comment. Rich, did you raise your hand?
Yeah, I guess the question for, I guess, Robson Homes or whatever. This, this seems to have been going on for a long time. I mean, how long has this project been from inception till now? And you guys bringing it to the council and designing it?
If I could speak, Richard. Came before the city council in February fourth, two thousand nineteen as a, an item to consider general plan change. At the planning commission, given the requirements that they asked us to, the program that they asked us to follow with the, you know, saving the trees and improving, increasing the amount of open space, we decided to take staff recommendation and pursue a, a density bonus instead. But we, we submitted our application August of two thousand nineteen, and it's now, we're approaching over two years since we first got involved in the project. And it's been a long road, but we're here and we're, we're proud of what we've, what we're putting before you.
Thank you.
When you say two years, you only submitted in August of nineteen.
And we, we, we got involved with the project, you know, earlier than that, because there's a lot of due diligence that goes in before you make an application, and there's a lot of, of work. And I know that Vice Mayor Gibbons, you know, you know, asked about the affordable, the affordability. I just want to make a comment on that, and that is that, you know, one of the, originally that the property is owned for and allows eighteen units. And, you know, under that scenario and those early staff reports, you know, under that scenario, we decided not to pursue that because, you know, eighteen giant homes that would have, would have produced just an affordable housing fee of about three hundred thousand dollars, we decided to try to produce more units that would be slightly more affordable as well, as well as affordable, you know, to very low single family homes. And to do that, we, you know, we pursued a much more lengthy and complicated zoning process. And we started, you know, in November, December, before we got to the, the council for a study session and ultimately the planning commission for a study session and beyond.
More questions or comments, Rich? Any council questions from the applicant? No. All right, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Andrea, do we have more than just one person?
We do not.
Okay, so Heidi, I'm, I'm going to kind of thread the needle here. I understand you have questions for the traffic engineer, but we usually typically, you just mostly make public comments. So if you want your question as part of your public comment, then the council can decide what to do with that. So go ahead, Heidi, you have two minutes. Welcome.
Sorry, challenge ten you. So my, my question is really a comment. So I echo Liz's concerns with regards to traffic. This is something that we've brought up, brought up since the inception of the project. And it's something that we've provided suggestions such as a keep clear, maybe as a dedicated signal for us to turn right. It's already a very treacherous path for us to actually make a left turn. So if we do get out of Mozart and turn right onto Bascom, it's very difficult to cross three lanes of traffic, traffic to make a U-turn. And my comment would be that I don't think the traffic engineer has gone through and done the study of all the other projects that will be impacting traffic on Bascom. So we have the Bascom Complete Streets project that will likely narrow the number of lanes that are on Bascom, making it even more difficult for us to exit. We also have the North Forty that is just across the highway, which will create a number of additional traffic challenges. And so what it could potentially mean is that we can't cross and do U-turn over by eighty-five. But actually, we may have to proceed all the way down to Lark to be able to do a U-turn. And it could be that they even forbid that because of North Forty. So I'd really like the council to consider doing some more work around the traffic study to make sure that we look at a keep clear zone, maybe a dedicated light to allow residents to exit. You know, Robson doesn't, isn't the cause of this problem. This problem existed before they applied to, to put this project forward. They will double the traffic. We're very welcoming to their project. They've done numerous changes for us from parking.
Okay, can you please, you're at your two minutes. Can you please finalize your?
Absolutely. So I'm saying this is not Robson's problem. This isn't something, but I do think that the city could do something to further evaluate the traffic impacts and maybe provide a solution for us.
Great, thanks for, and you live on Mo's, off of Mozart?
I live off of Beethoven Lane, which is at the end of Mozart, and I represent the homeowners of the homeowners association.
Great, okay, thank you. So I'm now going to close the public hearing. And now we will bring it back to council. And after council discussion, the applicant can have up to three minutes for closing comments. Oh, I guess that's after. All right, sorry. Does the council want to have a conversation? And Liz, do you want to, Rich?
Let me go first.
All right, Rich, your turn, you're up.
Trying to keep quiet today. How do I say it without sounding, I, I'm not going to, obviously, I can't go toe to toe with certain council members on, you know, the, the traffic studies and all that. I'd like a nickel for every time we've talked about traffic studies, at least the last couple of years, but certainly the last eight years where we had similar discussions. I worry, I worry for the city because we do this. I worry, I worry for the city because we do this a lot. That's why I wanted to ask, you know, Ropes and Homes, how long these things go? You know, it's my own business and a CPA, I know, you know, things are hard. And, and if we keep saying, take time and take more time, we don't get things, projects get killed. And we've killed a lot of projects the last couple of years, and everybody knows that I am fond of saying, let's not let, you know, perfect get in the way of, you know, we, we have to get things done. We're gonna hear in a minute about Rena numbers. And if the answer, at least from this group, is no real project that's gonna be good enough, then why even bother having that discussion? We, we, this is a good project. Ropes and Homes is built, I don't even know all the ones. I forget, there's certainly someone's corner, there's Madison, there's, I mean, they're beautiful projects. Uh, everybody yelled about traffic on all of those, I remember, as well as many others. And in the end, if I, if I wrote down every time we said traffic's gonna be terrible, and we did a post-mortem on how it was after, it was always, always almost a hundred percent less than we thought it was gonna be. I know Revere, we had a, a lot of worries when we put the prune yard in, we had a lot of worries, the new prune yard. And in the end, traffic was less of a problem, not more. So I, you know, I know, I know we can get into it, and I'm sure we're about to in a minute and spend a lot of time on it. But, um, if there's one project that's got, we, we've already spent a lot of time. It's a nice project, and I, I certainly think we need to, to move forward. And, you know, I'm not gonna go toe-to-toe on this, that, or the other thing. I, I trust staff, I trust planning commission, and I trust Ropes and Homes to get the job done. They've certainly done it in the past, and, uh, the city needs to move forward. If it's not that project, then, you know, by what we're gonna talk about the Rena numbers, this will instead be, uh, you know, a fifteen-story tall building or something in order to meet our numbers in the future. This would be good if we get this in, it's gonna be a lot harder to make that happen. So I'm a, I'm a big fan of it. Thank you.
Okay, I want you to comment on the park and the options.
Well, I, I understand the problem with the park. Um, I think in the end, with insurance, it's certainly understandable. So it, it, it should be something for the homeowners association to determine. It's not really the builder, that if they can't get insurance, we've got something similar with my, my house here with insurance and, um, and not being able to do certain things. So that's kind of a micro issue for the future. They can't get it, and then they have to find a way around it. So, um, I, I, I don't see at this point we can require saying you must put it in because I, even if it didn't come up now, and then we said, yes, put it in, then six months from now or three years from now, insurance companies are always, always changing their, their plans. And they say, no, some little kid coming from far away came there and, and broke, broke his toe or something, and therefore, we're gonna, you know, really make your insurance high. So I, I, I can't see at this point we're gonna be able to dictate that. It's nice that it got brought up, but it may, if it didn't get brought up today, it may get brought up a year or five years from now. So I, I would be in favor of leaving that out. It'd be nice to have a park, but not necessarily saying that people outside have to come into it. I think the mayor and I have agreed that park overall, we should do separately. If they can put parks inside of a, a townhouse area, that, that's a great thing. But, uh, that to me is a separate issue from allowing the neighbors and the, uh, and people from outside of the immediate community to put, to be able to use it. Thank you.
Okay, um, I'll go through our, uh, order, Ann, do you have any comments?
Well, first, I, I wanna thank that applicant for going above and beyond, working on this project that they intend to address. State goals are and trying to address the neighbors' concerns. Um, I do like the, um, project overall. It's a nice quality. Um, it's provided below, below market, two below-market rates units. Um, we're also gonna have the additional ADUs, um, with this project. You understand that traffic is an issue, but I will also believe that regardless, the traffic is gonna be an issue. And, um, another project could come along and we would have the same, same issue. Traffic concern. And if there's a way to mitigate it somehow and restrict the turning or allow the turning, we could have some additional dialogue there, that would be great, um, as, as a means to address it. I, I am a little disappointed in, in the fact that I, I, when this was initially approved, um, no plan amendment to go forward, I thought that the, um, traffic study would be a little more robust and, and identify, um, some of the impacts that are, that are associated with that intersection, namely the North Forty and, um, across, uh, Bascom and the Bascom Street Skate Project. But again, I, I understand that traffic is an issue, it's gonna be an issue. And so it's how we try and mitigate it and try and help and alleviate some of that. Um, as far as the park, um, at this point, I would agree with, um, the recommendation number three to accept the applicant's request that they, um, try and accomplish the, um, insurance requirement. And if they can't, that they would put the city on notice that they weren't able to, um, accomplish that in, in each, in each year and then notice the park that, um, it's not available for public, public use.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. So I, I, I like this project, and I remember back, the zone text amendment was requested, and I supported it then. I think this has been a big enhancement to the area. I think, I think, um, we, we see this project, the applicant listening to the neighbors and the feedback we got, and also to the planning commission, to SARC and to the individual commissioners. So thank, and I think that the project's changed a lot from initially smaller, bigger units to something that everybody seems to like a lot more, accommodating more people. These are very nice, you put in some great open space. I'll comment on the parks now because, because I mentioned that. This is, this is a hard, I tend to agree with Councilmember Bybee. I, you know, if a best faith effort is made to get that insurance, and we can do it, great. If not, I'm not sure how you, anything but close them up, I feel, to the residents. I don't know, it's something Joe A. is gonna have to deal with, as Councilmember Waterman said. It could change in the future. We could get the insurance today, and then it goes away later. What happened? So I would ask for a best, best faith to get that done. And if it's not gonna, it becomes a waste issue to see if they can get it done. If they can't, it probably can't be opened. And I don't, I don't, if I were living there, I don't know how I'd support leaving it open if we weren't insured, right? So I don't know, I don't know how you do that. It's a very difficult situation. I, you know, I like the idea that, that duet was first proposed to add more trees and more open space. But to me, we didn't, I don't think anybody mentioned this, if we're gonna, there is that option to split the duet, right? Make it to two. And if, to me, if we're gonna split the BMRs, I like the idea of splitting the duet because duet kinda is different from everything else. It doesn't fit as well to me. Um, but I'm open to either way, but I think that's not a bad proposal, the alternate that came in. I love the ADUs. I remember when we did the, there's a zone text memo, we talked about that. And I think for a while, nobody wanted to do them. I'm so happy to see those in there because getting the ADUs in there at now, at the beginning, is just a great idea. It's a great, and it's a way to, to make these units potentially more affordable for people, too, should they, should they need the space for family or rent them or whatever. So I like that. I'm not concerned that they're not BMR units because by nature, ADUs are more affordable by their size. Um, when I first came here, or came here a second time, twenty-seven years ago, I lived in one for six months because what, it's what I could find, and the cost was substantially different. So it is an affordable, affordable unit. I like that. Let's see. I, we shouldn't lose track of the planning commission discussion. Mayor, we always talk about, we got that elusive five-oh. They got an elusive seven-oh, which is, it's almost never heard of. And I don't see, I don't remember too much when the vice mayor and I were there. Seven-oh's a lot. I think they really went through this project well. They had some good comments. I don't, everybody liked every piece of it, but they came together and supported it, and I think that's important to recognize. Um, last couple of things I wanna say. I think, say that, that the traffic studies, people always question the traffic studies. And I think, um, the one that I questioned the most from the planning commission days was, I think it's Revere on, on Bascom, right? And there was no way that study was right. But invariably, what I've seen is, most of these studies are right. The, the fear and doom we, and doom we get on these, um, that, that are not consistent with what the study tells us, don't usually happen. The study's usually pretty good in my experience, and I'm willing to accept that. And the last comment I have is, there was a comment made, and I'm sure the vice mayor's gonna get back to, about the number of BMR units. And I'd like to ask staff, Director Kamoian or city manager, clear this up for us. I mean, from, from reading what I've read, it, it, it's consistent and meets the requirements for the number of units. But we're gonna get back to that discussion for sure. There's a lot of good questions, so I think it's fair. Let's hear from staff, and then I'm sure the vice mayor's gonna speak still, so you'll respond. But I'd like to know if there's, if it's subject to interpretation, are we within the appropriate guidelines or not?
Okay, can we let, uh, before staff comments, let's have Liz speak and myself, and then staff could collectively answer all of our questions.
Yeah, I'd just like to get at least that topic, as long as we discussed it, and I'll find that, that's my input. But I really like the project very much.
Liz?
Got it. Um, so, um, I obviously scared everyone. Uh, I'm gonna go back. It, it's a good project for what it's trying to do. I'm going to qualify that by saying that when we ended the study set, or the discussion we had, um, back, um, in two thousand nineteen, I, at the time, that this was a very difficult project for me because we do want more housing. And what's the right way to go about it? Okay, so back in, in the time that was came before council, as a planning study, council approved an actual zoning change. It increased the number of units, uh, to thirteen to sixteen, or whatever the next category was. So this submittal is quite different than what we discussed then. And, um, I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna use this as much as, uh, much like what Councilmember Resnikov just said. It's really important, um, for a learning opportunity for the council, staff, and the city. This is gonna happen more and more. Apparently, it happened before, and I don't remember the previous example. So this project is, um, a straightforward, um, R-one-six project with, um, eighteen units, and under our inclusionary ordinance, we would get three BMRs, just on the ordinary project there. The state law is written, and I appreciate it's the way the state law is written. Density bonus formula, allow the developer to get seven additional units. City gets no extra BMR units. It just allows the developer to densify. I'm fine with the additional units. I'm fine that the city doesn't benefit from giving the developer the additional units. I think that that's an issue that I think the city as a whole has to come to terms with. Because it, it, it's a, it's a net loss in getting below-market rate units, which is why I went back and read the material and looked at that, um, statement about why the BMR can use the in-lu process. I think the staff report could have done a better job explaining that because it wasn't covered. At least, I missed it if it's there. I, I just think it's tragic. I just think it's, it's tragic that we're, we're just, we're not getting anywhere. And, and I think we're gonna have to look at our ordinance and have, have that. As Councilmember, um, Waterman will say, it's one more item to go to have a study session on. So I'll accept it is what it is. That's what staff and the city attorney is saying. I will just simply say I disagree. I think the language is clear and that the unit should not be allowed to substitute the in-lu up fee. In terms of the traffic study, um, I think we're missing something here. I went back and listened to that, that meeting, um, that Heidi referred to, and it was very clear that there's a problem there. In order to get out of Mozart, to go left, they drive through the private parking lot of the medical buildings. Trying to get, um, to the left is, is virtually impossible, and I do agree. Um, it was very well said that, um, it was, it's an existing problem, and it is going to get worse because of the, um, Bascom and Mav plan and the additional traffic and, um, what is it, the forty, uh, the North Forty. I honest, the staff report ma, uh, made no reference to analyzing the problem. I, I feel that if we approve this, as this project moves forward, I think we should request that there be an additional study to look to see what could be done with a clear understanding, um, that it, it's a bad situation. In terms of, um, the number of, um, of the playground kind of the park, we have this situation and at least two other projects. We have it at the Pulte Homes off of Llewellyn, and we have it, I think it was a Regis project off of Harrison. And they all have private parks, so this isn't a new problem. I may be wrong on this, but I think, I don't think we need to require insurance because the homeowners association is ultimately gonna be responsible if something happens. They're gonna find a solution to protect themselves. So I'm fine with the city staying clear of it. Um, I just don't see needing submittals and, and verifications. Uh, I am disappointed at the number of trees that, um, are coming down. I don't see a sufficient number of trees going back up, looking at the plans. The surrounding streets has a park strip with trees in it. This does not. It's, it's skimpy. It's skimpy on landscaping, um, in my opinion, our assessment. The, now, as far as the duplex, what happens, I do not think the duplexes are appropriate for the BMR, uh, units. The language in the ordinance, um, again, is pretty clear. See if I can find it. It says, uh, let's see. It says, "The target units shall be reasonably dispersed throughout the residential project and shall be comparable to the design of the market rate units in terms of distribution of model types, number of bedrooms, appearance, materials, and finished quality of the market rate units." That's out of, uh, the code twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty, paragraph two. So I don't think it should be either of the duets. I think it should be two different units in the site as a whole. I, I think that's fair. I, I'm looking, I'm looking for fairness and appropriateness and working within the language of the code. And if I can't get one, one language about what qualifies as, um, allowing an in-lu fee, maybe I can get the language of the other one, which says they shall be reasonably dispersed. So, and reasonably, uh, compared to the different units. So I think it should be two different units, um, on the site. More housing. I'm fine with the housing. I'm fine with the density. I'm fine with the ADUs. I just think that this is a good example of how thoughtful we have to think about things in advance and have a plan of how we're gonna address this kind of situation.
Can I ask you a question and go back to the park? What, what did you mean? Do you want them to get rid of the requirement of making it open to the public?
No, uh, I don't think it's gonna be easy to enforce that one way or the other. They can do it with signage, whatever, but I don't think we should have, um, the requirement of insurance. I, homeowners association's gonna have to deal with it.
Okay. So I'm gonna now make my comments. I've met with Mark, uh, before. Uh, he came in with me over a year and a half ago with a piece of tissue paper and said, what do you think? And I said, more parks, more trees, more open space. He did include that in the project and I understand there's 17 trees being removed, but there is also, I think it's nine of the larger oak trees that are being saved. I support the housing project. I support the ADUs. When this came for the preliminary approval before, I was concerned that the upstairs ADUs were not in our ordinance yet and that was the only reason I voted no back at that point because we needed to get our ADU ordinance up to speed, which now it is. So I agree with Councilmember Resnikov that it's, I live in ADU, it's an affordable, low to moderate income way to stay in the Bay Area. So I do support the housing project. I do support the density. I am concerned about the park. There's no way we can open this to the public and a year from now or two years from now, the homeowner says, oh, we can't afford, afford insurance or we don't want it open to the public, we're going to close it. I don't think you can take it back once you make it a public park. I'm concerned that this came in at the ninth hour today, it was like two hours before our meeting tonight. I haven't been able to research it in its complexity. I would like to see the park stay open to the public. Our, one of our strategic planning is to create more open space as Councilmember Waterman stated, that we agree on more open space. I think it'll be extremely difficult to enforce no public. And I'm thinking of the condo project that's down at the end of the cul-de-sac. Do they count as the public? Can they use this park scenario? So the park is the stickler for me right now. I understand that this has taken a while, but we have changed from a zoning map change to a PD to building parks. So I am sensitive to the time period that this has taken, but I do think we have a better project. I appreciate the ropes and including the planning commission comments and being receptive and open to that. So my one main thing is the park and I feel like it came in at the last minute that it's difficult to make that decision right now. So now we can go back to staff about the questions that Paul and Liz had. Daniel?
Well, the question is, I mean, further confirmation of the applicability of the in lieu fee. I'm not sure if the city attorney wants to further opine on that matter.
I, I don't know that there's much more to say about that as there, it's not like there's a developed body of case law that we can turn to. It was a question of interpretation and of, at first blush, based on the language of the statute and obviously the vice mayor and I reached different conclusions.
Does that answer your question, Paul?
Yeah, I'll give that a, that's as good a yes as I'll, as I get from Bill. Well, let me, I understand, I mean, it's an interpretation thing, so we're not going to solve it tonight, right? But at least we know that it is subject to interpretation and that's, I guess, the best we're going to get out of it.
Liz?
I would just say it's a significant issue and it would be prudent for the city to resolve it going forward before we get caught in this again.
So certainly that's a different question than for tonight though. But that's a, you're saying, as an issue, this will come up again, so let's talk about it sometime.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm agreeing it's not solvable tonight. I just respectfully disagree.
Okay, so at this point, I'll bring it back to Robson's. I don't know if Mark or Richard or what, Sam, you have three minutes to reply and answer, maybe answer some of our questions.
All right. I'd like to address Mayor Landry's question about the last minute nature of the insurance. This was, was brought up by, by Daniel. He mentioned that you had any trouble with your insurance and it brought up either just before or just at the, right after the planning commission. And as soon as we heard about it, we immediately went out and started looking because he said that you're having trouble with us and started asking insurance brokers and others if we could, if we could get insurance. And we have, we found it difficult. We, it was rejected by several people. I didn't want to ring the alarm bell until the last minute and I was hoping that we would be able to resolve this issue. And I think that we will be able to, to get insurance going in. I don't, we've been, we don't have a quote yet. We are still waiting for quotes and this is going back four weeks. And it got to the point where we were hoping that we would have it resolved and we didn't. And, you know, it just, it just made me aware of it, hey, this may be a problem and I want to, this is going to be a problem for the homeowners. Ultimately, it's a, it's a common area insurance and you need liability coverage for the common area and when you add that, that element in about public access, you know, there are, and we did talk to the Pulte Project and Daniel directed us there and it took several weeks before they, we even got a phone call back from them and their insurance broker and finally got ahold of them and, and we're still waiting on a quote from them. But it's from an insurance carrier that is in, back in Philadelphia and we're, it just, it hasn't been easy. And at the end of the day, the homeowners need some flexibility if they can't get insurance for their, you know, to, for their liability. And that's what this was about. And so, yes, you know, this was, frankly, my idea to provide this, you know, public access because I wanted to encourage engagement and as Daniel pointed out, it's a, just a split rail fence. I mean, it's just to kind of guide it initially. It was my, my thought that this, this would be open to the public, but if it's not cared for, and I didn't even, I wasn't even thinking about insurance, I was just wondering if people didn't take care of it, that the HOA would have some flexibility to close it so that they could make sure that it's taken care of. And I'm not even arguing about the maintenance requirement and the HOA is taking that. It's really just the insurance because people go in there, someone gets hurt, there has to be coverage and because it goes directly back to the homeowners and this is the way it is. And so it's important that, that they be able to have insurance. And so I'm sorry for the late nature, but I, you know, trust me, I reacted as quickly as I, as I heard there was an issue.
Okay. Okay, so I have a question.
As I answer, I'd like to answer some of the other questions that, that came up, but I'm thinking about a time.
Okay, well, let me ask you a question about the park.
Okay.
They're going to need insurance for the park either way, correct?
Common area insurance, yes, but that one little piece adding, you know, public access, you know, changed things. And we had, you know, we had insurers and brokers saying, we can, you know, we rejected it, we won't cover it.
Okay.
We've continued to look and I've got a guy on the phone, his name is Brian Smith and he's a very sophisticated guy. He's my CFO and he is more than welcome to join this conversation. And he is not your average CEO, I mean, average homeowner president. And he's having, you know, he, you know, had trouble trying to find the insurance.
Okay. So Liz, did you have questions for Mark?
So I guess the question is, why does it have to be public? Our goal is to add open space. We're adding open space as part of the project, right, Mark? Right?
Yes.
And space as part of the project. So why does it have to be public?
I thought it would be.
Let's have Daniel. Daniel, sorry, Mark, let me have Daniel, because isn't a condition of approval right now to make it a public park?
It is, but there is no code requirement that it has to be so. It was something that Mr. Robson offered, the planning commission agreed to and it was formalized as a condition, but there is no.
So it is currently, it is currently a condition of the project.
Correct, that's recommended by the planning commission.
Okay, so Mark, I'm sorry to have cut you off. Rich or Ann? I see Rich, do you have your, did you want to make, Ann, do you have any other comments?
Just a question, if, if, would this need to go back to planning commission if the council decides that it's not going to be a public park?
Daniel?
That would be up to the council. I mean, it arguably is material change that could perhaps warrant additional discussion, but if the council feels that you have enough information at your disposal to make that decision, you certainly can do it tonight.
If I could just clarify a little bit, so.
Is that, is that Paul Kamoyan? I can't see you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
No, you are, okay.
Okay.
I thought it was you.
Yeah, so, you know, the planning commission spent a considerable amount of time as part of their pre-application as well as during the, the meeting to talk about, you know, how the open space area should be grouped and integrated into the neighborhood. And it was kind of the side comment that one of the commissioners made that, you know, if you can move it more towards the street and consolidated the open space so it's more usable, it would, it would be a good public benefit as well. And I, I think at that point, that's when, you know, Mr. Robson decided, well, let me come back to you with that, that option. So although voluntary from Robson, it was initiated by the commission, I guess, to, to respond to Councilmember Bybee's question, you know, the, the planning commission, this is, this is their recommendation. They're overly in support of, as, as Councilmember Resnikov mentioned, 7-0 of the development. The development didn't hinge on this area being open, the park. They were just, you know, very happy with the fact that there were ADU units, that they were seeking density bonus. You know, had they not sought the density bonus, we would not be getting too very low units. We rarely get very low affordable units. If they just went with straight density, you know, we would have got three moderate, one, one low income and one moderate, we would not be getting the very low as part of, part of the inclusionary. So, you know, you can make a decision without this going back to the, the commission. Once again, the, making the park open was not the, the issue the, the council was really, the commission was focusing on. That's.
Okay, I don't see how we can open the park and make it public in a couple of years from now, they decide they can't get insurance and you close it back down. So I think we need to either have no public access right now or have public access. I don't see how we can take it away later. So is anybody else, Rich?
Yeah, but in those kind of things, those are kind of micro things, they happen all the time. I don't, I don't even, when we're saying park, is there going to be swings and stuff or this is just a?
There's a playground.
So, you know, I find it hard to believe people are going to, if it has to be, it has to be. I mean, we, those things we open, I don't see that as an issue, but probably the opposite will happen. I, you know, you just don't know, there are a lot of things that beyond control because of insurance, because of other things. Or where there's something wrong with the park and it may have to be closed because of that or other things and that need to be fixed or they may need to be closed down. You know, in the middle of virus now, we're certainly seeing a lot of parks that aren't usable because of that. And it's just not usual to me at all. I don't see people, we've got a lot of parks in the city, I don't see people, like, oh my God, this is the worst thing in the world. So I, I don't, I, I'd like it to stay open, it would be a nice thing. I just try and I get, knowing Mark, he'll, he'll try really hard and the HOA will try. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. I, I don't see it as something that should start such a beautiful project as this. We spent a lot of time talking about it, let's move it and, and make a decision on it. If we want him to come back to talk to us, he can come back to talk to us or whatever the council was at the time and decide at that point, two years from now, it's such a catastrophic event because it's been open and now it's closed. Expecting there won't be a lot of people making.
Okay, you're cutting out there in the end. I, I think you're finished. I'm watching your mouth, it's not moving. Liz?
So.
Are you speaking? You're on mute.
Thank you. I don't think council has concluded the discussion on what, which two units would be appropriate for the BMRs. My opinion is it should not be either of the duets or the new split duets. It should be two units on the site based on the language that's in the code.
And as a reminder, the applicant did submit the revised materials that separates the duet, so.
But they're not the same and they're not dispersed amongst the project. I don't think those two units meet the requirement of, of the ordinance.
So let me make sure we all understand, the duets are four bedrooms, aren't they? And most of the other houses are four bedroom? I, I see, Mark, you got to shake your head more to say yes.
You know, what's the square footage? What's the lot size? I mean, the language, they're not dispersed across the site. I mean, I can read, I can read the description of what it's supposed to do. If you read that again.
Okay, let me step back a second. I think what I'm hearing is everybody's in support of the project. Would we all say, as the bigger picture, we're supporting the project? Ann? Yes, Rich, I know, okay. So we're all supportive of the project, now we're down into the minutia. Okay, I think that the density bonus and the ADUs are a great benefit to our community. The BMRs are really a great benefit because we don't have a lot of the very, very low. And when you look at the price of the house versus what these BMRs are going to sell for, it's extremely low in the, the value of the house. So if we all agree we like the project, to me, the two issues are the, where the duplexes go and what we do with the park. So let's focus on the location of the BMRs. Ann, do you have any input on that?
Well, I'm just reading the staff report and what the planning commission recommended and that was to approve one of the attached duet units, which is, I guess now they're separated and then one detached unit on lot number 16. So I would find it support their recommendation. If that's amenable to the applicant.
Can you lean forward a little more? You cut out. Do you support the two duets in the front for BMRs or distributing them in the site?
I, I would prefer to go with the planning commission recommendation where they recommended one of the duets, although it was attached, and then unit number 16.
I, I don't know where, is that in the back?
I don't know, it's just in the council, it's in the council report and what was recommended by the commission and apparently the applicant agreed to that at the meeting.
I would agree to that also.
Okay, and so Paul, do you have comment on the BMRs?
I'm, I'm fine with what Councilmember Bybee just said. I mean, I, I think that, first of all, you said it, it's great. I, I can't think of how many times we get very low income housing, I'm going to admit that, right? So that's great, thank you.
Sit closer to your mic, please. Everybody's coming in and out here.
So that's, that's great to have those. I'm okay if we split it, just like Councilmember Bybee said, then, then I think they are distributed. I actually, to me, that you have one duet that stands by itself, but when you, when you split the BMRs, then one of those duets is a full market rate, so it's distributed. Somebody's paying full market for that. I, I personally like the design that the applicant came back with after, said, well, if you want to do that, I can split the two. You don't lose, I don't think, much open space, but you have all the homes being detached that way, right? I, I kind of thought it looked nicer, just an opinion. I'm okay with what was discussed at the planning commission of splitting them one in one and I think that by nature is distributed, so I'm okay with that. If others supported as well, I personally thought the design of splitting that one unit, duet, to look nicer in the whole community. But either way, one of the, I see one of those units as being a BMR duet or not and we can go to the other lot that the planning commission, I think, came up with. It could have been 16, I think. Wasn't six because there was some discussion of six and it wasn't six. 16 fit as well. So I'm, I'm good with either of those and, and I don't know if anybody else talked about the, the change that the applicant put in and said, like, we could do.
And, and I don't know if anybody else talked about the, um, the change that the applicant put in and said, like, we could do this as well. I thought the design was nice that way. But either way, I think when, when the duet by itself is in both units, by nature, it's distributed and I'm okay with that.
So you're okay with keeping the two BMRs and the two duets?
I'm, I'm okay with, with either, I think. Duet, I'm okay with one on the duet and one on that, whatever lot they said. It wasn't six, I remember, because I read that discussion. I think it was sixteen, right?
Yes, it was sixteen.
Yeah, and then, and then I think the applicant was okay with that, if I remember right from the minutes. But then, then came in the proposal of, well, what if we split the duets then? Right? He's gonna buy a half of a unit at market, high market, right? And one's gonna buy very low income. I, I happen to personally like that, that suggestion. It came in late, I, but I liked it, and I did notice in the, in the, in the agenda, we can look at that and approve that, and it doesn't go back to the planning commission. So that would scare me to have to send something back. But I, but I'm open for either splitting the one with unit sixteen, or splitting duet, and then use distributed the same way out there.
Liz?
It's, it's odd to me, a duet would be half market and half, um, below market, right? I was okay originally with the two in this together. I see the advantage of separating them, but it's odd to me to have one physical unit be both.
Liz?
So, um, I'm, uh, accepting of the planning commission discussion on the two different units. Um, I very, I feel very strongly, they shouldn't be the two duets, whether their duets are separated. Um, I think the two units, the planning commission discussion, uh, covered is appropriate. Um, and I just would like to say, I, I appreciate the, all the good qualities of this project. It's unfortunate that it's get, it, again, in my, in my reviewing of the material, it's caught up in a lot of very complicated technical issues. And this, if we don't talk about them on a project by project basis, we won't get them resolved. So I'm not holding against the project or the developer. It's just things we need to discuss.
Okay, so let me take a straw vote. Raise your hand, which one's in the screen? If you think the two duets in the front should be the BMRs. Raise your hand if you think the two duets should be the BMRs. I see no one raising their hand. So then the second is what the planning commission recommended, which now that the, I like the duet separate, I think it ties in with the whole thing. So now is one duet, the BMR, and this lot sixteen, the BMR. Paul, no vote? Uh, your hand is flashing, are you?
I'm trying to find my camera. I'm okay with that of everybody.
So we all were agreement that one duet should be a BMR, and the lot sixteen is the proposal to have, uh, the second BMR. Okay, so when the motion comes, we got to make sure we have that in here. Now, the second issue is about the park. I would either prefer to get rid of the public access completely or make them get insurance, but not be able to take it away later. So the, Rich, you had a comment?
Yeah, just to agree with you, um, that, that's fine. I mean, I know what I was saying before is a little bit different, but I, I'm just fine with, let, let's leave out the public access now. It, it can, and later, um, and there are other ways to expression which I shouldn't use, I won't say it, but there are other ways to get accomplished, which I think the council does need to do at some point when we talk about open space. I, I know I'm down, but you guys can remember me about it. I, I think we need to have a good discussion on open space, because that's one thing that's moved very, very slow. You know, in the last ten years that I've been around, we, we just haven't been able to more open space. We, we fixed.
You gotta sit closer to your, your.
I think it's yours. Everybody else is, I'm hearing everybody, but, uh, the, the fixed up playgrounds that needed fixing up, but with the exception of, uh, St. John Beach Park, I don't remember in the last ten years, we've put a, a new one. So I know that's beside the point. But the point being that I think this area of open space needs a good, healthy discussion. I think you and I, with the rest, but you and I have agreed that that needs to be done, uh, more macro, more big picture. How do we get more open space? And just going to a developer and saying, take a little piece of land and put a, a swing in and allow the public to get in is not gonna fix the open space issue. I'll stop.
Okay, um, what I see on the issue of the park is I don't think someone out of the larger part of Campbell is gonna come and sit and go to this park. I see it to be the people on the cul-de-sac, or the condo development and the houses, that it's really gonna be the local little neighborhood that could potentially use the park. So my question, Mark, and you may not have the answer, but would the insurance issue be still the same if the only public access would be the houses with on that, that street?
I think it would be, because it's how do you control, it's, it's either public and how do you control it? I agree with you, and that's the way I see it being used. I think the easiest way to do this would be simply to eliminate the public access. And there'll be a gateway on Mozart, and I think by os mostus, people across the street and down the street will come in and will use it, and if there's ever a problem, the homeowner association has the flexibility of doing what they need to do. That's all I was really trying to do, and that's the way I envision this thing working initially, and I think that's really the easiest way to do it.
Okay, so we need parks. One of our strategic planning goals for this year is more open space. We didn't say in that goal that it had to be open to the public open space, so this project, he has updated the plans from what I saw originally over two years ago, probably. He's, has three parkland areas. He saved the large oak trees. I think he's made a good faith effort in an attempt to make it public. It's this last obstacle that has kind of gummed up the works. So all in favor of getting rid of the public requirement, but still building the open space? All right, we got some, we're, we're on the five old row right now. Okay, so the last thing is traffic.
Wait, Ma- Madam Eric?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. The, 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 I'm glad we got past the parks, but the, the first question had to do with the duets. So are you, are you accepting the applicant's requested change to split the duets? Or you want the duets to stay the same?
I personally want the duet separated. I think it's more cohesive to the neighborhood. Um, but then the conversation was where are the BMRs? And so everybody raised their hand, one duet and one on what the recommendation from planning was lot sixteen.
Right, so, thank you. So you clarified that the council would be okay with separating the duets and the two detached units.
Okay, let's take a vote on that. Do you guys agree with the separating the duets? I'm getting yeses from everybody.
No, 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 sorry, sorry. I wanted to ask a question first. Um, I would only offer, one of the reasons that I liked the duet is that the cost of those units will be lower than when they're separate. Separate require will cost more. And I liked the diversity of the price point by having the duet. I liked the diversity of who would buy them and live in them. I mean, our whole, our, our goal is to provide a range of housing prices, and having it as a, attached two units will cost less and, and should market less. So I prefer that they stay together.
Even though one duet would be the low, low income and the other would be regular market price?
Well, for, for, app, app, the answer is absolutely yes. I'm fine with that.
Okay, so I keep raising my wrong hand, like it's a backwards on the camera. Any, uh, anybody in support of keeping the duets together as one building? Okay, we got one. I'm, I'm not, my hand was just to show you. Okay, so we got one. Everybody else would like to see the two units separated, the two duets. We got four on that. Right, okay, so we're gonna, someone's gonna make a motion. Now, the last thing I'd like to talk about is traffic. I get it, how hard, I, I used to go to the doctor's office there in the front building, and I could not get out on Mozart for several lights, and then, because I'm heading to Campbell Village to try to make a U-turn, I would have to go up Samaritan Drive or into the parking lot and turn around and, or go all the way to Lark, so I understand that. I didn't see, um, a lot of information about having a clear, keep clear area in front of Mozart so that you could pull out and you got to swing out three lanes to get the, the U-turn, um, at the next interchange at eighty-five. So is that something that we can ask to have, or does that need to be studied more? Daniel or Paul?
I believe we do have the, Matthew D, the city traffic engineer, who can apply on the keep clear, uh, strategy that the city employs. Matthew?
Yes, I'm looking at an aerial photo of, um, that intersection of Bascom and Mozart. It's very tight space, um, to have traffic swing wide. Normally right turns, you don't, you don't want people making a right turn across lanes. You're supposed to complete a right turn in the lane nearest to you. And just looking at the spacing between where the crosswalk and stop line are for the ramp intersection and where the right turns would be coming out of Mozart Avenue, there's very little space.
Okay, what about the suggestion of modifying the signal so that the people on Bascom heading towards Los Goddess, the stop bar would be before Mozart so that they could be part of the traffic movement, um, with the signals?
I'm thinking there might be a way to do that as you described, and then have traffic clear, um, the intersection with some kind of extension of the green time. Southbound traffic will be stopped north of Mozart by the signal, but then the green at the ramp intersection would stay green. Similar to, uh, if you're familiar with Campbell Avenue at railway, how there's a clearance time. Uh, the pre-signal, the traffic is stopped upstream, but the track area is kept clear so that no one stopped on the tracks. It's the same kind of operation where you would have an extension time. But to do that, you would have to modify the traffic signal, so it, it could be costly.
Okay, so I, I'll, uh, like to hear from council of what we should do about the left, the fact that it takes forever to try to figure out how to make a left turn. Would you guys support adding, uh, try to add some kind of cle, keep clear area or looking at the modifying the signal? Liz?
Um, I don't think we're, we have the expertise to choose between that. Um, I think perhaps what we can do is do a motion to, um, uh, require the applicant to, uh, do additional work on the intersection to come up with a solution such as, um, the stay clear or modifying the signal, but some resolution must, must be implemented.
Okay, and I think having a signal modification is going to be, uh, fairly expensive there. Rich?
Well, due respect, you know.
But, Rich?
Sure, what happened to?
I don't know what happened to Liz.
Oh, um, we lost the video in the audio. Um, oh, let, let me just, really quick, Liz, because you, you were, and okay, you're, lost your video. So, um, you know, again, it's, it's kind of what I, I said at the beginning, traffic is traffic engineering. I, I always joke to, uh, that if I get reincarnated, I want to, not disrespect or I want to do that position. Um, it's just another one of those things, I hate to jump in and there's gonna be this huge problem at this point. I, I think we have to, you know, we're gonna study something, we either believe it or not, from just about every project. I, in that major project, we've been looking at for the last few years discussion, um, whether it's In-N-Out or Chick-fil-A, or we can go on and on and on about traffic problems. Um, and, and I mentioned before about, um, there's just a lot of project, even a couple of projects, we're gonna have this problem, so rather than trying to figure this out before, there's already been a study, a professional study done, and, and it's saying basically the delta between the problems we're having now and what this is gonna add to it is not that significant. Given, so throw this on the applicant right now at the eleventh hour to me is just way it's not fail. I think we need to, let's get it out there. We will see, we will see what happens. And then we could start adding, you know, the lights, adding whatever, whatever could come through. But at that point, we will have better analysis to do rather than this theoretical now. Well, let's, let's, or let's do three or four more studies and then solutions. I, I I think we've seen this again. I remember this discussion a lot with Rivera. Oh my God, the traffic, the traffic, the traffic, and then it turns, I drive by there almost every day and hardly, I think, just because of the time people leave to go to work and things, so, um, I other, not throw this out at the eleventh hour right now and say, let's fix the traffic problem when we don't know for a fact that there's going to be we already mentioned the, uh, more of forty. Well, that's not done yet, so we don't know what that's gonna do, and, and that may be so big that a, a little bit coming from Mozart's not gonna be a huge amount. And fixing it by adding this lane or that lane may, may not. I, I hate to put that as a requirement right now. I think we're just shaking those on it. Thank you.
Okay, can, um, Sam and, uh, Michael, Yi and Matthew turn your video off so I can get Liz in my main screen here? There you are. Hi Liz, again. Um, okay, so I don't think we can come back later and put a requirement on this project at a later date to deal with the traffic. Our public speaker did make the point of this problem exists right now. And to me, it's a burden on the developer to solve a problem. They're, they're gonna contribute a little bit to the problem, but they're not the sole source of the problem. And so I don't know how we deal with that as the larger city issues. Liz?
Oh, um, I think the comment has been made by all of us that, um, well, I will say by several of us, plus the, the, um, neighborhood representative, that there is a known problem and that this project will, the the people residing in this project will have the same problem. Okay? If we ask for a, I'm gonna say, for lack of a better phrase, a more thorough alternative analysis of what could happen as a condition of this project. Um, and then say that, I suppose this is the hard part, then say that the developer would contribute their fair share. And it doesn't mean that it would be done right away, um, because the city would have to come up with their fair share of money. Much like we're talking about other, other things. Staff has identified, uh, their fair share for curb cuts and sidewalks and different kinds of things. Um, so, um, would it be possible to say additional studies, a, a study to provide alter, to provide solutions? And, um, the applicant would do their fair share. I, I don't disagree with you at all that they shouldn't bear the whole thing. I totally agree with that. But, um, it's their residents that are gonna have as much of a, it's to the benefit of their residents, that project, the residents in that project, to have a good solution. So that's how I'm looking at it. It's.
Right, I guess I would ask a rhetorical question to you, Vice Mayor. I mean, is there, can you think of a single project that we, since you've been on the council where this has not been an issue? Just thinking.
I, I, I know we have traffic issues on a lot of our projects. The question here.
Where we have not.
Well, I, I just said, every project seems to have traffic concerns. Daniel seems to be flagging me, and then, or actually Anne first, maybe?
Well, I just want to say that I think it's unfair to, um,
Well, I just want to say that I think it's unfair to um impose a traffic mitigation condition at this point. When the traffic study that was done really didn't identify um necessary mitigation. And so what I would think would be the best approach would be to wait and see and see how. What the traffic impact is going to be, know today what it is going to be when, when these houses are built. And at that point, um come, try and come up with solutions. Uh as far as, you know, that what has been discussed here is as far as um timing the lights or maybe. Putting uh keep clear signs in in the road or something, something to that effect. But but looking at it as. Um a solution when we know what the impact is is going to be or how 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 severe it is.
Okay, Paul?
Thank you. Yeah, I think this is kind of late in the game. We have a traffic study and Councilmember Bybee just kind of hit it. We're speculating, right? We think this is going to be bad, therefore we should do something now. And I think it's even worse to say. Applicant, you'll pay some portion of it whenever we figure out what it is. Um I think we had a study. I just heard, we just said, it didn't identify the problems or by fears. I always go back to Revere because. I remember talking to another planning commissioner at times saying, how can there be less traffic coming off the freeway when we have more red, that kind of thing? And yet they were right. They were pretty good about it. Um. If we have problems down the road, the city has the ability to go in and do signage. And signage is probably what the difference is going to be. We can address that. But the burden at the, at the, at the last minute here and the burden, a a possible solution that we don't know what it is, that they'll negotiate. I think it's time to finish the project, move on. And as Councilmember Bybee said, if we have a problem, the city can address it, probably with signage, I would think. Don't know, one other thing I think we said earlier, we don't know what's going to happen in North Forty and we, you know, we, we had the same problem. We all Winchester. What are the urban villages going to do to us? And what do we do here with the hotel they're going to put up? We can only deal kind of to some extent with what we have now. And not to not responding to fears that we don't know are going to come true. So I would, I would say move forward. And then the city easily can look at this later and say, we have directional problems and signage problems and fix them. We should burden a what if on on this project without any idea of what the cost or timeframe of what if is. So I would say.
And Daniel, I think you were trying to, I'm sorry, did I cut you off, Paul?
No, I I thank you. That's good.
Okay, sorry. Daniel, did you have comments?
I've no, I was actually just going to reiterate what Councilmember Bybee had indicated that the traffic study did. Include a um signal warrant analysis. So this was looked at as just simply that. It's not really downwards traffic in the scope of. Traffic volume since it's really only twenty-five single family homes.
Um I have a question for either Paul Camoyen or Daniel. Um I know on other projects. Like on Hamilton, uh they have to pay a contribution towards the future widening of the off-ramp. Is there something in here where um it would, you could say something like up to fifty thousand, up to twenty-five, whatever. Uh that that contribution would be made at a future date?
Well, there is a financial contribution that is tied to the project's VMT analysis. So that's already. Incorporated to offset city improvements in the area. But because the traffic study, as Councilmember Bybee indicated, did not identify an impact to be mitigated. There's no nexus to extract additional funds from the applicant.
Okay, all right. I think we've uh gone around and around on this one. Uh does anybody want to make a motion? So the things that should be included are the park and really getting rid of the condition for the public access. And the DMR distribution uh within the project. Who wants to make a motion? Bill, do you have your lights coming on? Do you have comment?
Uh just that if you are going to remove the requirement for uh the park to be open to the public, that would be. Um at a revision to condition eleven of the resolution to approve the tentative subdivision map.
So we just need to say that in the motion?
You ju, or reference what I said, yes.
Yes, and also, Bill, condition number twelve R would need to be removed as well.
So eleven and twelve R.
Correct. And also as a reminder, if the council does want to approve the project with a separated duet, so they are detached units. That is the alternative ordinance for the plan development permit that's included as attachment uh I.
Okay. Paul?
I'll give it a shot if you want.
Can I ask a question? One question prior to that? So Daniel, does that also include? The last item, the alternate um resolution, does that include lot number sixteen?
Yes, that would, yes, the BMR selection, the lots as recommended by the planning commission.
Okay, thank you.
Separated.
Thank you.
Okay, Paul, you're reading from the agenda?
I'm trying to do this on Zoom and a split screen, so hold on one second.
Just lean forward a little.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to pull up the agenda and the Zoom kind of together, so bear with me. Okay, so. I will move that the county, city council take the following actions. One, adopt the resolution adopting a mitigated negative declaration. Two, introduce an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment. Three, an ordinance approving a planned development permit with a density bonus. Fourth, resolution approving a tentative vesting subdivision map. And five, the resolution approving a tree removal permit with the three. Uh changes, the adopting attachment I for the splitting of the duet. And location of the uh bullet parking units, removing, I believe, this clause eleven. Per city attorney's comments.
So it's eleven and twelve R.
And twelve, I was going to do it, and twelve are per the senior planners' comments.
Okay, do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
All right, roll call, please. Andrea?
Councilmember Waterman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye. Wow, you guys. An hour and a half conversation. I think it was great dialogue. Uh there's issues that are a bigger picture than this project. I would like to thank Mark um specifically for meeting with me so many times. And for the revisions that were made to make this a better project. And we did get a park out of it. Um not open to the public, but we got open space. Anne?
Don't we need to introduce the ordinances for first reading?
Uh, okay, I didn't know about that part.
It's, I need to read the title.
Okay.
Being an ordinance of the city council of the city of Campbell approving a zoning map amendment to amend the Campbell zoning map designation from R dash one dash six. Single-family residential, six thousand square foot minimum lot size to PD plan development. For property located at one, six, one, seven, nine, East Mozart Avenue. File number PLN twenty nineteen dash one, four, eight.
I'll move that we waive further reading.
Do I need a roll call vote on that?
Second first.
I seconded.
Okay, Anne seconded.
Thank you, Anne.
Okay, Councilmember Waterman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Okay, wow, you guys, thank you. What?
Two more resolutions.
Oh, we need to read the other two resolutions?
Yes.
All right. Sorry, I'm not with the program here.
Being an ordinance of the city council of the city of Campbell approving a planned development permit to allow construction of twenty-five single-family homes. Five accessory dwelling units. Four detached and one interior, a new private street and associated site parking and landscaping improvements. And city bonus to allow a thirty-two point five percent increase in allowable density. Use of state parking standards and provision of two very low income below market rate DMR units for property located. At one, six, one, seven, nine, East Mozart Avenue. File number PLN twenty nineteen dash one, four, eight.
I move that we waive further reading.
I'll second.
Councilmember.
Do you have another one, Andrea?
No, um Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye.
That's it.
No more?
No.
Okay, thanks you guys.
May I ask the technicality? Sorry, isn't there a resolution on tree removal?
You you don't need, you don't need um uh. To waive anything with regard to resolutions, only with regard to the reading of ordinances.
Oh, okay, sorry. I had, I had that backwards.
So, uh thank you, Mark. I would add one more uh wishful thinking item. Plant more trees. I know uh our city forest helps plant trees. Okay, um we're going to take a break for five minutes. Um that brings us back a little past quarter to ten. Thank you guys. So so let's say nine forty-five. Nine fifty, somewhere around there. Okay. 9:50, somewhere around there, okay. Okay, we're waiting for a couple more people here, we need, uh, Rich and Paul. There's Paul. Now we need Rich. Paul, do you, do you have, uh, Rich's ear to see where he is?
I can call him, hold on. Apparently the answer is no.
No, he's not coming back?
No, I don't have his ear. I'm trying though.
Is he walking back from Palm Springs?
On a scooter? Or the slow boat?
He's trying technical difficulties, so he's trying, I guess he's, he can't get, get back in, he's trying right now, he may have to go out and go back in.
Does he need CECL to help him?
He, he just said he's trying it right now, he's, he's, um, he, he said he's, he just can't connect and come back on.
Does anybody know if it's still raining? I can't tell from where I am.
It's why I came in with my background this week.
I know you're sitting in front of me in the chambers there.
I'm usually outside, but it was raining.
I know, but you're sitting right in front of me, up. All right. How much longer do we, should we wait? CECL, if you're on, um, can you help Rich? I have a question for Bill. Where are you Bill? Can we start while he's trying to log on and go to our next item, or do we need to wait?
No, you, you can move ahead without him.
Okay, Paul, do you want to text him and tell him, please still try to log on? But we're gonna go, we're, we're gonna go ahead and get started, it's getting late here, we're getting to 10 o'clock. So, next item on our business is the master equity lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management. Um, in the sense of our time of already being 10 and we have more items, does, uh, the council want to have a presentation? Or do you want to go right into asking questions? Anybody comment?
I'm, I'm good for questions.
I'm good for.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay, so Todd, we're gonna give you questions first, okay? Save some time here. Who wants to start? Do you have questions Ann? Paul? No, Liz? You're on mute.
I know, thank you. Um, so my questions are pretty basic, uh, one is I appreciate that we're actually looking outside the box on how to, buy our vehicles and, um, save some money. What I didn't see in the material that we received, um, going back to this five, so two topics. First one is, we keep going back to this five year, 80,000 mile, whatever. And I'm, I'm a little concerned that this agreement boxes us in. I mean, cars are being made better, we're not driving, we have a lot of cars that haven't been driving this last year, last nine months. So, what kind of flexibility have to change the criteria to, um, it, it read to me as if we were being forced to buy X number of vehicles at X price over X period of time. So, I, I, I mean, I, I liked the idea, but I, I, I'm a little worried about being boxed in.
Let me just start by saying Rich is back online. Rich, we're on the fleet vehicle item.
Yeah, sorry about that, my, uh, the internet.
We understand, go ahead Todd.
Okay, thank you very much Mayor and Council, I appreciate the late hour. Um, so I, I think what I'm hearing in your question Vice Mayor is maybe a couple of different things, or maybe I'm not understanding correctly. When you said the 80,000, six, six year 80,000, I mean, we do have a replacement criteria.
Yeah.
Which is 100, which is basically 10 years or 100,000 miles on most vehicles. And we typically go well beyond that. So typically when we do our assessment and we weigh that against our, our budget availability for making purchases, we, we try to, to, to come to counsel with kind of a, of a real world balance between how long can we maintain certain vehicles on the road? And what kind of funding is available, and so oftentimes.
Agreed.
So, in terms of, there's not an 80,000 mile number that, that applies to.
I'm probably getting it mixed up with PD.
Okay, so with regard to the lease, uh, what we would do is, is what we are attempting to do is instead of buying two vehicles this year, that we had $90,000 budgeted for, we have, we have looked at leasing opportunity and we are proposing to lease nine, while we take 11 out of the fleet, so there is a net downsizing of the fleet. And for those nine vehicles, we would be in a five year lease. So, we do agree that we will lease those nine vehicles for five years.
Now, now.
We would do that now.
At, at a cost that's not in the budget.
The cost that's in the budget is like, we would use the 90,000 that we're not spending on the purchase of the two vehicles.
So, that's where I got mixed up then.
Okay, if, if within the fleet management budget, we, we often, you know, we, we will budget our staffing, our maintenance costs and our vehicle purchases. Within the last few months, we've come to you and we purchased several, uh, marked police vehicles, we had a line item for that.
Right.
We also have a line item to purchase two light duty vehicles for $90,000.
When you say light duty, sorry to keep interrupting, it'll be quicker, light duty vehicles, meaning passenger vehicles.
Passenger or light duty trucks. We have a $90,000 in the budget this year to do that.
Right.
We would not spend that money, the 90,000 on the.
I got that.
To pay the first year of the lease.
So, you're saying, let me say, are you saying we can lease 11 vehicles for $90,000 a, this year?
Nine vehicles, we're taking 11 out and we're bringing nine in.
And we can rent, uh, lease them for the same 90,000?
For $57,500 roughly, I can get you the exact number.
For one year, for one year.
That's for the first year cost, then we still have, we have four years left on that lease.
And how are we budgeted for that?
We will build that into the operating budget, the next four years in lieu of replacing those other seven vehicles, we will not be proposing replacements for those, which we typically budget far, at a far higher level, we will budget a reduced amount to cover the lease payment.
Okay, so I, I appreciate, I, I, this is important because we're tight on money.
And, and that's why we are proposing this, to be honest.
But do we have, and I appreciate that. So, would we, would we be replacing two vehicles next year on a normal cycle? Do you have it set up so that you can tell to this year, to next year, to the year after, so there would have to be budget line items?
I can tell you, yes, within, I can tell you what's, what's, uh, what is, reaches the criteria every year for the next X number of years. But I can also tell you that we have approximately 50% of our fleet now exceeds the replacement criteria. And so what we're trying to avoid is a situation where at some point down the road where we have multiple failures all at once and have to spend perhaps hundreds of thousands of dollars on replacement in a given year.
Okay, all right, uh, thank you, I, I, I don't think that was that clear in the staff report, so thank you.
Sure.
My second question is, um, are we, um, I'll use the phrase again, boxed in. We do want to go to more, um, energy efficient, non fossil fuel vehicle. And I did read, you know, in, in, in the staff report, various scenarios. Are you comfortable that we can get, um, all electric vehicles, if that's available? Uh, I don't want to, I, I'm asking again, are we boxed into particular types of vehicles? When we, ideally when we get a climate action plan together, is going to say the city will proceed with non fossil fuels?
No, we're definitely not boxed, I think at some point we have as much flexibility as we want to build in. If we move forward with this, with this proposal as prepared or as presented, this does have two Prius primes in there, so there's two plug-in hybrids out of the nine. But for some of the other vehicle, uh, functions that we would need, such as for park maintenance or for building inspection, we, we need to go with light duty pickups. And so right now there is not a good alternative. But certainly in the future, if we change out, we will have all the flexibility, we need to go all electric, to go hybrid, to go plug-in electric, uh, plug-in hybrid, I'm sorry, uh, for whatever the market has available for us to choose from.
So you're saying, did I understand you, and I did read it, but it's, you, you've got hybrids right now, they're, they're plug-in hybrids, they're not all electric?
Uh, the two, the two Prius primes that we're proposing are plug-in hybrids, so they're not necessarily exclusively electric.
Yeah, so, I mean, okay, so that's, that's what I was trying to, trying to get at, I, I personally, uh, think that, and, and I'm, I'm, I appreciate that I'm stuck because we don't have a climate action plan. I don't think we should be buying hybrids, um, I think we should be buying all electric, so, okay, thanks.
Paul, Rich or Ann, you have questions?
I have a question, what's the term of the lease, are we committing to a five year lease or is it a year to year?
Five year.
So, so we don't have option to change these out in two years?
Not these five, but you, what we would have, I mean, what we're really trying to get at is this, we're essentially approaching this as, as a pilot study, right? We have a fairly large fleet, in relation to, we have a 90 vehicle fleet when you add in all the light duty trucks, passenger cars and marked vehicles. We're basically taking 10% of that number and entering to, into a lease. And we believe that we will save money when you compare the lease versus purchase over a given period, not only because the lease is cheaper, because as you turn vehicles over, where we used to, you know, take vehicles out and run them into the ground and the salvage value is, is almost zero. At the end of a five year lease, there's pretty substantial, what's called equity in these, in these vehicles. So, in, in this particular case, at the end of the five year term, we would have spent, uh, on the lease, approximately 200, uh, if you can bear with me for a minute here, 280,000 over, uh, five years on leasing. And the projection is that we'll recapture 90,000 of that back in equity. That's basically, uh, about $90,000 less than if we would have bought the vehicles outright. And that doesn't factor in, yeah, the, the, the expected savings that we expect to get in terms of fuel and lower maintenance costs. Now that's, that's the part that we really want to study to make sure that, that leasing is cost effective, because if it is, and it proves to be, we, we may recommend expanding the number of vehicles that we lease in the future.
Can we, uh, look at a shorter term lease, like two to three years? Because I would like us to start going to all electric and with our climate action plan, it's heading in that direction. And I'd hate to make a five year commitment on nine vehicles.
Well, I, for, for the functions that we need these vehicles for, electric alternatives are not currently available.
For the light, for the trucks.
They're just not there.
Yeah.
And when they.
We don't use, we don't use diesel, right?
No.
Okay, good, Liz has a question?
There, so, um, the, it, why do we have to go, so, I'm thinking, and, and maybe I'm wrong, um, I don't know enough. I'm thinking that if we're talking passenger vehicles, we basically need two seater cars to run around town. We've got a couple of Yarros or something out there in the parking lot. I do, we need, why do we need, uh, hybrid Priuses? I mean, that's a big expensive car, four seater and all of that, if I'm following what you're talking about. Are there less expensive cars, why, I'm, I really am, I'm look, looking to the budget, I'm looking to operating costs, and I appreciate you have as well. But why not go all electric now for the passenger vehicles? And smaller, and smaller.
Well, I don't know that we'd want to go smaller, because we, we, you know, we, we oftentimes will have a third or fourth, well, not, not under the current operations, because we're not, we're running under the assumption that we're basically sending one person out in, in a vehicle at a time now. But there have been many occasions where we've sent, you know, multiple people out in the vehicle, particularly when they're doing road surveys and in anticipation of a annual street maintenance project, or when they're going out to a construction site for inspections. Not uncommon at all to have multiple people, and then you often will have things like measuring wheels and, uh, other equipment in, in the backseat or in the trunk. So, this was the vehicle that we came up with, because we did want to retain the flexibility. A, a, a plug-in hybrid basically functions like an electric if you keep it plugged in. If you charge it every day, it will run as an electric. And, and the, the reason the gas powered engine is there is essentially to protect your range.
Yeah, I'm, I'm well aware, I'm well versed, um. Yeah, the Silicon Valley Clean Energy has the e-Hub and it has a whole bunch of programs on buying electric vehicles. That might provide you with some additional information on how to find a, a, a better vehicle. I mean, the Prius, I mean, there might be, I'm gonna call it a station wagon or an SUV that might better suit your needs rather than a Prius. I mean, Prius is a high, it's a high-end, high expensive car. So, um, I just, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable, um, at this point with, with the selection and the size and the, um, and the hybrid. I'm, I, for that, I'm just, I'm not quite comfortable.
I'm gonna make.
Approach, I appreciate the approach.
Okay, well, just to, to give you a sense on what we would pay over the course of, uh, of the, the annual cost on a Prius is about, uh, $5,600 a year, that would be our cost on a Prius.
So I want to, I saw Alex waving his hand, but I'm gonna make a comment. I just leased a vehicle last year and I chose not to go electric, because we haven't solved the problem with the batteries, that what you do with the batteries. that what you do with the batteries later. Uh, basically they can end up in landfills. So that's why I was asking about the terms of the lease. As time moves on, we've got Tesla and other competitors dealing with batteries in a better way. That to me, a five-year commitment on a hybrid or gas vehicles doesn't give us the flexibility in a year or two with better technology to swap out cars. I know for my lease, every two years I have the ability to change the actual car. So I don't know if that's something that's in these lease agreements.
Well, we're not, not, it's not proposed in this term. I, we, we, I will tell you that we did a lot of homework on other vehicle types. And, and for something that we would also consider, but we're not considering at this time is we thought, we spent a lot of time talking about light duty, about light duty trucks. And the recommendation on light duty trucks is because the aftermarket is so strong, that you may want to turn light duty trucks over every one to two years. Because by the, if you, once you consider what you're, what you're putting out in your initial cash outlay versus what you will recapture in the resale market, you, you, you've almost kind of driven them for, you know, next to nothing. Um, and so there really is an analysis that goes into each vehicle type as to what the optimal time to retain that in your fleet is. I'll stop here. I see Alex is, I didn't know if Alex wanted to maybe overrule something I said earlier, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna invite him in.
Come on, Alex, chime in.
No, you, you hit on exactly the point that I was gonna point out is that, uh, the analysis on the Priuses, that it was the best value for the city, uh, because of equity at the end of the, uh, at the end of the term of the lease. Uh, maintenance costs and those other things considered as well, but, uh, Prius, Priuses have the highest resale. Uh, we can, you know, we have, so we don't lose as much in depreciation at the end of the lease.
Okay, so, um, I would just try to, I, I do appreciate all the work you put into this. I think it's great. Um, I see that there was a lot of consideration to our budget, a lot of analysis and assessment of our actual use. I'm just concerned about the five-year term. And I would certainly like to see a two-year option of swapping out a vehicle or something. So that's just my own concern. So do we, do you guys, does anybody else have any comments? Rich, Paul, Anne, shaking your heads, no?
Well, I'll just, I'll just say, I think they, they've done a lot of analysis and I defer to, to, to them what kind of vehicles they need. And I agree with you, there's some issues on batteries and things like that. But I think there's some vehicles that aren't going to fit to all-electric in there. I trust what they're doing and I, I don't have, I'm, I understand your five-year thing. I, I don't think it's that long a period of things are going to change in over that time. I think it's a reasonable term. Longer than that, I wouldn't agree. But I'm, I'm okay with five years. I'm certainly okay with them determining what they need vehicle wise.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do that if I can find the.
I beg your pardon, you need to do public comment, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry. Boy, you guys are keeping me on track here. Uh, Andrea, do we have anybody from the public wishing to speak?
We do not.
Just waving their hands, Todd.
Yes, I'd like to make a public comment, if I may.
I thought a motion was coming.
I know, I, I apologize, but you know, I, I, I was going to roll this into my presentation and I was, I was caught off-guard. So I, I, I don't want to let this mo, this item pass without recognizing our, our great fleet staff. You know, we've been in front of you before to talk about parks maintenance and street maintenance and building maintenance. We very seldom get an opportunity to talk about our fleet and, and our plans to replace and maintain vehicles in front of you. So I do want to recognize Alex for his good work out at the yard. And I do want to recognize our fleet maintenance group made up of Mario Ramos, Rick Alvaro and Chris Zecanelli, who do a great job. I know in previous years when we had Public Works Week out at the yard, you've all met and kind of mingled with all of them. Uh, so I do want to give them their due because they get very little recognition because they work at the yard. They're not out in the public. They're not working with council. Um, and then I also want to thank Margarita Mendoza for helping us put this report together. That is the end of my, my two-minute public comment. Thank you.
Well, and I'll just, uh, ditto for, for council. Thank you to staff and all the people you named. I can't remember them all other than I know Alex. Uh, so I do appreciate all the effort. It, it is, um, very apparent that you did a lot of homework in here. Okay, Paul, you're on.
I'll do it. Thank you, Alex and everyone else, because we, we have a lot of vehicles, right? You think about all the vehicles out there, all the miles and, and they're all out on the road all the time. It's not an easy job, so thank you for that. Todd, next time if you wanted to do the motion, go right ahead. I, I'm sorry, you just shocked me. I thought that's where you were going. Um, I'll, I will make a motion that the, uh, council adopt the resolution approving a master equity lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management for a cooperative procurement contract to replace aging city fleet vehicles for an annual amount of $57,568 for fiscal year 2020 to 21, for total amount not to exceed $287,840 over a five-year period.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
May I ask for a friendly amendment?
What?
Uh, that we maximize all-electric vehicles, uh, to the extent possible.
I think that's inherent in what they're going to do and if they can take advantage of that, they will. So I would.
Okay, now roll call.
Councilmember Waterman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
I'm going to say no because I feel we need to make a strong commitment about, uh, non-fossil fuel vehicles.
Mayor Landry?
I appreciate all the work done.
Aye, and I'll just add my little, uh, chime in about, uh, electric vehicles and the batteries and their other implications. Great, okay, on to the next one. Thank you, everybody. Nice to see you guys. Nice to see Alex. All right, the next item is seven, the proposed regional housing needs allocation, RENA methodology and sub-regional shares. And we have, uh, Stephen Rose. There you are in front of the Ainsley House at night, not in the rain.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Landry, members of the city council. So, um, the purpose of this particular item is.
Okay, can you sit closer to your mic where I'm having problems hearing everybody tonight?
Okay, I'll, I'll try to lean in a little bit. Hopefully that helps.
Thank you.
Um, so the purpose of, uh, this item is to provide a brief update, uh, on the regional housing needs, uh, development timeline and anticipated housing shares for the region and solicit feedback from the council on a draft letter to the A-BAG, uh, to A-BAG and MTC regarding the, uh, proposed or now adopted, uh, RENA methodology. All right. So, um, as a brief overview of the RENA development timeline, on October 15th, the A-BAG executive board, uh, passed the RENA methodology proposed by the HMC and Regional Planning Commission. The comment period for the methodology started October 25th and will run until November 27th. Uh, on November 12th, A-BAG also held a meeting, received oral testimony, which staff had actually attended and used to vocalize concerns, uh, which were previously raised by the council in its letter to the A-BAG and MTC director, uh, in, in, in August. So, um, looking at the timeline, uh, we're pretty much indicated on, on the screen here and red, this is where we're at. Uh, looking ahead, um, the final, uh, RENA methodology draft allocations anticipated in spring, uh, of next year. With appeals occurring in the summer and with the final RENA allocation, um, being approved in December 2021. So in terms of unit allocation, the RENA methodology assigns 143,000 units or so for Santa Clara County, which reflects a 9% increase in, uh, the county's proportional share of units or households. Uh, since, uh, well, at least relative to other counties in the Bay Area, since the previous RENA cycle. Uh, while subject to change, the city of Campbell's anticipated received, uh, 3,696 of these units, which reflects a 424% increase, uh, over the prior RENA cycles, which had only required the construction of 933 units. So in consideration of the draft, uh, of, of the proposed methodology, the draft letter serves to reiterate points previously raised in the August letter to the A-BAG MTC Executive, Executive Director. Uh, while the letter is not critical of the RENA methodology in general, it expresses an ongoing concern with the use of 2050 households as a baseline, uh, recognizing that it included areas that are either unlikely or unable to be redeveloped in the next 40 years. Um, also understanding the city of Campbell's unique geography. Uh, we pointed out, uh, areas such as PG and substations, circulation fountains and similar areas, uh, as examples of properties that should have been excluded from the assumed growth projections. And we also provide a map, uh, illustrated with points which we raised in the letter. Uh, with that said, um, and in conclusion, staff is recommending that the city council, um, uh, take the following action to provide feedback on the draft letter to A-BAG MTC, uh, regarding the approved RENA methodology. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, do we have questions for council? I mean, for Steve, Ben? No questions? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Andrea, do we have anybody from the public wishing to speak?
Uh, yes, we do. Rajah?
Hi, Rajah. Are you there, Rajah?
He's muted. Hang on one moment.
Don't we love technology?
Speak for yourself.
Technology knows when you're on a deadline. They love to deal with the, mess with you when you're on a deadline. Is he still online?
Yes, I, I see him still online. Um, he just hasn't unmuted his microphone.
Here, I, here's what I'd like to do is, um, while he's trying to figure out how to be able to speak to us, I'd like to see if we've had some council comments and then Andrea, let us know when he's available.
Okay.
Um, General, anybody, I know Liz is going to have comments because she's been helping write the letter. Uh, Rich, Paul or Anne, do you guys have, um, comments on the draft letter?
I, I support the letter. I think it's important that we be diligent and, and voice our concerns. I don't know that it's, um, going to change things, but at least we are, we have an opportunity to, to voice our, our objections. Thank you.
Paul?
I agree with that. I mean, I just said, I don't remember why we said it exactly. I don't know the value of it, but it doesn't hurt to speak up and, and give an opinion. I don't think it's going to change things, but, um, it certainly won't change things, so I'm okay with it.
Rich?
I agree 100% with my two colleagues. Thank you.
What's that famous saying in a wedding, speak now or forever hold your peace? So it's better for us to speak now?
Well, I think, I, we have representatives around, you know, and you guys are doing a good job of A-BAG and everything and cities association and, um, picking as a community. I, I don't know why, what these exercises, nothing to do with the letter, but A-BAG's going to say we need 4,000 houses and something and it won't get built, but that's okay. I mean, people, I, so we'll see.
Well, I, I'll let Liz speak, but I think one of the biggest issues, and we did write one letter before, is they're counting our number based on square footage and acreage, but they're counting the creek corridor, they're crowning parks and schools, and so our number's a lot higher. We're, we're one of the highest groups in the South Bay here of how many housing to build. So I'd like to hear from, is Andrea, is Raj back there yet?
No, we actually think that perhaps he's stepped away.
Okay, so let's go to Liz.
Oh, thank you. Um, yes, the, the rec, the letter that is, um, in the staff report is staff's letter. It, um, does not reflect, uh, my comments. Um, so, um, I'll probably add more comments now than you might have expected. I think, um, I, I wish I could disagree with everyone, uh, but I can't. I do think there's a possibility of changing and refining things, not a lot. Um, I asked, I sent to Brian just before the meeting, Palo Alto had their city council meeting last night. There's a fairly, um, good quote to read from the newspaper. Um, they've sent five letters. Um, so everyone is concerned and I think council member, uh, Resnikov will speak to cities associations letter as well. Basically, the, the numbers are unrealistic. No way anybody's going to meet these numbers. Uh, so how, we, we have to find a way in our letter to a couple of key points that reinforce the unreality of, of the number. Uh, I think staff made a, a good first attempt with the letter from August, but, um, I think the graphic that was used, uh, was very hard to read. I think we need to regroup on that, um, and, and, uh, maybe, uh, one overall map and then, um, a map for like the downtown and some other areas. Um, because the, you need, the map needs to reflect all the land use types that are not, um, on the base maps that the, um, MTC and A-BAG use. Um, I gave a list of, um, uses that aren't, um, included yet and I can repeat that, um, to staff directly rather than here.
Excuse me, Liz. Sorry, Raj is now unmuted. Can we hear his comments and then let you continue?
Sure.
Okay, ready, Andrea?
Rajah, are you ready now?
All right, let Liz continue. See if we can get him back.
Okay, so the, the RENA numbers, it, I do, I think the letter is a little bit off-target because it's challenging the RENA methodology. And I don't think there's a ghost of a chance of changing the RENA, uh, methodology. What we need to make sure is the underlying data that the methodology is based on is accurate. Um, that includes the, um, mapping of all the uses that I was just speaking to, uh, that really are missing. And I wanted to say that one of the things that is if you take the RENA number of 3,964 units and you divide it by 45 units an acre, which is pretty much all what we currently have, but it's been discussed in the general plan update, we would need 88 acres by that amount of housing. What you learn from that is that they have, they're not using the growth of housing units that they used to use. They're not using that. They're doing a catch-up method, which is based on the Plan 2050 numbers. That's where we have an opportunity to go in and challenge the numbers. So the, the total housing need for our community is this high. We modify the land use maps to show less available land. That help, um, a lot. Another phase coming up where Plan 2050 has what they're calling the implementation phase. Implementation phase should help us a lot because we can, um, this is what staff at A-BAG has recommended, that you know how they have the circles? that you know how they have the circles and the circles go over Highway 17 from our transit station? They go over Highway 17, over the Creek Trail and everything, but you can't get from there to the station. We can ask them to add implementation criteria that talks about actual path of travel rather than as the crow flies. So we should encourage our participation in writing those kinds of things and asking to participate in that. We talked about the fluctuation of the bus routes. We should indicate that that's a challenge because they constantly change. There's no recognition of built-out density. We should ask for something about that. There's no anything about, let's see, housing and job ratios and balances. So these are all criteria and pieces of information that as a city of speaking just about the city of Campbell, that we should try and put into this letter, understanding that the methodology isn't going to change. Some criteria may change. And the numbers they get from 2050 have possible, can possibly change if we provide them with additional information. So I'd like to see the letter tweaked a little more, recognizing that. Staff did a good job providing the VTA information that says the persona corridor won't be extended. I was able to get and provided Brian with the name of the VTA staff person who's telling A-BAG who, that those things are going forward. So we can work on those kinds of things. We could say something, you know, about we are visiting with staff because you've seen the information that it's not going forward. So I, I'd like to see the letter have more specifics of how Campbell's underlying data is wrong or needs to be corrected or improved, whatever the right phrasing is. And because basically the methodology is going to stay the methodology with a few minor tweaks. So if my hope is by bringing up these various issues, that comes the implementation period. We have an open door to our options. And comes to the appeals situation, we can have the basis for appeals. I do completely acknowledge that one of the biggest disadvantages to all of us in this cycle is the fact that the Department of Community Development Department at the state level and the Department of Finance at the state level set up these really, for all intents and purposes, arbitrary assessments of high opportunity zones and high transit zones. And they are not reflective of reality in our community at all. I've been told we probably won't be able to make any changes there, but we can do some implementation comments that will help minimize the impact of that information. So I, I appreciate, I said to the city manager, I appreciated all the efforts of staff and Stephen. And I put that in writing. I just think we could tweak it to where it's got a chance of making a difference.
Okay. All right, let's see if Raj is here yet. Last call. Andrea, how are we doing?
I don't think he's available. He's still muted.
Okay, so we've tried four times. If you're listening, Raj, we tried to get you on here to speak. Paul, as our city association person, do you have comments?
So.
Sit forward.
I mean, cities addressed this obviously and drafted, and I support drafting the, the letter there. You know, maybe, maybe the vice mayor is right that we have to focus on, on the specifics of the, of the calculation versus the methodology or the actual input versus the methodology, if that's a word. I personally feel you do have to respond, but on the methodology, the methodology is what it is. I also agree with, with vice mayor that going from 900 some units to 3,000 units is, is a bit unrealistic. It's ridiculous. And, and some places have, have a bigger, worse problem. I mean, you, you would think it couldn't get worse than that. There are worse. I don't think we're going to change that methodology. And as long as they have this mindset of, of rolling over the unused numbers, even though we talk about this, we're entitled, but don't build, we could wind up the next time with 6,000 or 8,000 or whatever, and it's not doable. So I support it. I'm not an expert enough to know what, what the best method of attack is. I'm a skeptic in thinking that we're going to all change it. I could tell you from the city association side, which is the 15 cities in the county, there's unanimous, unanimous dislike. Is that a, is that a minor, it's not even understatement. But I think there's also some feeling of frustration of what can we do? It's being pushed on us, right? It's just being shoved on us like all the SBs and ABs that come down every year that feed into this. So I don't have more comments than what the vice mayor said. I, I'm not skilled enough, I think, to know how to, how to wordsmith that argument. I'm, I'm a more, more of a skeptic maybe than she is about what it will do. But certainly, if we do nothing and say nothing, we have no chance, right? So all I can say is the city association took the similar stance of opposing it, but really opposing the methodology, saying these are unrealistic numbers. And, and some of what was said here tonight, they take into account land that can't be built on, land that's not accessible. I mean, it's there on a map, but you can't do anything with it. That's wrong. You know, I'm, I'm of the belief, just last comment, that maybe we do better when we go to individual representatives versus sending letters to agencies. I don't think letters to agencies do that much. Maybe we have to push harder on, on our electeds that have some say.
Yeah.
No, but I'm saying there's a lot of pressure coming down the other way too. So I don't see really them bending.
So if I, if I just may, I, I wish, I, I wish that would work. This is now bureaucracy at its finest, and I use that colloquially. Yeah, I, I don't see how any legislative representatives can, can help with this. We, again, we, the most we ask, we asked for an extension of a year given COVID. And we, we didn't even get the response from a, a letter response. And it was sent from the full A-BAG board. So yeah, I, I, I wish, I wish you were right.
This is, this is, this is very political and it's, you know, we have a problem. So we're going to tell everybody, just build thousands and thousands and thousands and just do it. Look what we did. We solved it. It doesn't, again, once again, we could, we could entitle all of this. We're probably not going to 3,000 units built within this period, probably.
Let's, let's move it forward. So the city council take the following act.
Hang on, Rich, I had, I didn't get to make my comments.
Let me see if we get three votes. This is taking a lot.
Well, I want to make a comment first. You didn't let me finish.
I gotta go then, so I'm going to let you go. Bye.
I think we should each have an opportunity. And Anne, do you have any comments, Anne?
No, I already stated mine in the beginning. Go ahead.
My, my only comment is, you guys, we got to try. We got to try the legal process. We got to try the formal process. And so right now, it's not necessarily a motion that we need. It's to receive information on the letter to have it move forward. I do think there needs to be some changes and modifications. So I don't know how, if we want to just let Stephen take what Liz and us have commented on and incorporated into the letter because we, we don't have another council meeting before the due date of this.
Madam Mayor, maybe if I could suggest just that the areas, summarize the areas where I think that we can probably tweak the letter a little bit if that's a help. And just clarify, I have spoken with the vice mayor about the comments on the letter. And I do agree that the letter is not intended to question the methodology, but in the second paragraph, we talk about that our comments are really in response to review the methodology, and that probably misleads them somewhat. So we can clarify that we're not challenging the methodology. We're challenging underlying calculations in the growth geographies to establish the potential growth in our community. And with regard to the potential exclusions that we talk about, things that should be excluded from calculations, we list several things in there, but what, what we're missing, there are some additional things that were, that we aren't showing in there, such as schools and churches. We can look at that list again and clarify the map that's associated with that. And then we could probably add some additional clarity to the VTA discussion, as was mentioned by the vice mayor as well. So those are all areas we could probably look to tweak. And if there's other suggestions, I'd be glad to take those, but those are areas I've identified, and, and I'll work with staff to do that.
Okay, we don't need a motion on this. Liz, are you good with all the comments that you made and what Brian just said?
I think there's a little more to it than what Brian just summarized, but as the council A-BAG representative, I, I can work with Brian a little bit more.
Okay, all right. Moving on. So the next item on the agenda is to receive a monthly fiscal update for November 2020. And in light of our time here getting close to 11, I had asked Brian if he can make a general statement. And instead of a long presentation that we mostly ask, ask questions because right now it's an update. Brian?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is an update to you. We've been doing monthly updates to the council with the goal of looking at potential amendments to the budget, if necessary, at the mid-year in February. The council has expressed its concerns, and I want to assure you that we are not waiting till February to figure out our strategy for dealing with budget impacts, that we are having those conversations on a staff level with all the department heads and our executive team to establish a criteria and a value to the services and programs that we provide. And we will be prepared when we come to you in January with your fiscal update to have a conclusion to that, that information. The council is very interested, as I understand, understand what programs and services do we offer and where are our priorities from a budget perspective? We are having those discussions on a staff level. And I want to assure you that when we come to you in January with your monthly update, it will also have that, that information completed so that when we come in February, we're not waiting to start implementing, that we could start implementing that if we need to after the January update to the council. So we will be prepared with that, and, and we will offer priorities and services and programs. And we'll offer some suggestions in January along with the budget update. I just wanted to give the council confidence that although we're not asking for action tonight, that we're hearing your comments and being proactive to be prepared to do what's necessary at appropriate time.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Will and staff for providing us with this information. It's very helpful. My one comment that I had made to our city manager early was we can't wait to the last minute to pull the trigger. We just went to purple. No more indoor activities. Our sales tax are going to go back down again. And we need to be prepared on a trigger notice to make some cuts or budget adjustments. Does anybody else have a comment or, because this was just FYI, receive the information?
I agree with what you just said.
Great, okay. Thank you, Will. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Brian. Okay, we're getting here. So we now have approved the appointment of the Civic Improvement Commission, and our subcommittee was Paul Resnikoff and Rich Waterman. And can you report on your selection?
Yeah, I mean, Paul asked me to do it. So I believe the term, correct me, Paul, I think it's two years, right? Left on.
It's a, it's a, yeah, correct. Oops.
Anyway.
It's a short, it's a shorter term due to the resignation of Hiraal because of those are work commitments.
We had three great applications, incredible. The people we got and we.
You got to talk directly at your mic.
I said we decided on somebody I think everybody knows about in this town, which is Mr. Chris Bracker to that two-year term. Congratulations, Chris. And congratulations to the other two who applied. I think they will hopefully reapply for the counts for the commissions. They will be a great addition sooner than later. Thank you.
I would, I would just, I would ask them to reapply. They were very good. We sometimes have too few. We sometimes have too many. We had three good applicants, and if they reapply, I think the city would benefit.
Okay, any comments or we'll go to a motion? Guys want to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we nominate Chris Bracker for a two-year term to the Civic Improvement Commission.
And it would, term would expire in August 2022.
Two, two years, two years. Almost two years.
I'm just, I'm reading what it says here.
That sounds right. It sounds right.
Okay, so is that the motion in a second?
Yes.
Andrea, you got that?
I got it.
Rich and Paul, okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Waterman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bibi?
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye. Boy, Chris, we got you now for another two years. You didn't get enough out of the G-PAC? We like your service, and I want to personally thank you for stepping up and filling this position. Thank you guys too for our subcommittee and interviewing. And for the two people that did not get it, please continue to come forward and make more applications later. Okay, committee reports. Rich? Anne?
So I attended the BTA PAC meeting last week, and there was a robust discussion about the Measure B funds and shifting those away from local streets and roads projects and funds towards the BART project. And a robust discussion, and the committee decided not to accept the report and send that motion to the, the board for what it's worth. And so we will stay tuned as far as any recommendations that come, come out. They assured us that this is very preliminary, and it's just for discussion purposes, and that no, no decisions have been made. So the committee wasn't all in favor or didn't really believe that, but we'll see what happens.
Paul? Thank you, Anne.
Yep, I'll go fast. It's late. In addition to the CIC interviews, we did, I had the board meetings with West Valley Clean Water JPA, West Valley Solid Waste JPA, the T-PAC, which is the water treatment plant that relates to the West Valley Sanitation District. That's a San Jose-run treatment plant. Cities Association, which we mentioned with the Rena numbers. And then this week will be West Valley Sanitations. I think I cover it in last week, this week, every time I'm on, I think, at the same time.
Liz?
So picking up on the Cities Association Selection Committee, we had nominations and elections for the second A-BAG position, which, I'm going to forget who got that. I'll think of it in a minute. And then to the MTC position, and that went to Margaret Abicoga, and then to Bachmed Bay Area Air Quality Management District, which went to Rob Rene and Rich Constantine. Morgan Hill. Lots happening with those kinds of very, very significant appointments. And the Silicon Valley Clean Energy has its usual series of meetings. We have now officially formed a super JPA, the purpose of which is to do contracts at a level where a level where scale matters. So they just issued the first request for proposals for long-term, so, long-term energy storage. This is a major step forward in doing 24/7, seven days, seven days a week, 24/7 hours, that provides electrical power with clean energy. It is to reduce the ongoing dependence on fossil fuel power generation. And then they've also set up a finance mechanism to improve the collateral based on the Moody's rating of the organization, and they're out getting a second rating, so all of that's helping the board, the organization be very cost-effective in terms of rates. We mean, we are maintaining less than PG&E, and I bring that up because PG&E is pulling a little bit of a fast one, and short version is, they have a black box of hidden fees that they are, the PUC allows them to charge clean energy groups, so they just announced, I believe I'm right on this, a 20% increase in that, while they're also projecting an 8% reduction in their energy costs. So they're trying to put CCAs out of business by hitting us so that we have to charge more than they charge. So there's a lot happening at the CPUC, and that's where legislative connections, Jerry Hill in the past has been very, very effective and helpful in this, and I'm hoping Dave Cretesi will be as well with the proper legislation. So all kinds of very good deals being made with clean energy and corporate agreements. So all in all, it's just going ahead as a very financially stable and successful enterprise for our residents and businesses to be directly benefiting from.
Thank you. I actually had an eventful last two weeks compared to before. Highway 85 committee meeting met yesterday, there was definitely a changing of the guard, Howard Miller, Jeannie, I forget her last name, several people are termed out, they've been on this Highway 85 committee for over five years. We did, I think I mentioned before, we're looking at a center transit lane, we made comments on what to study in the EIR and to go forward to the board with that recommended I attended the Veterans Memorial last Wednesday in recognition of our veterans, Liz was there also in attendance, it was a very good ceremony, we had two officers from the military come and speak, and I thought that was great. I also, last Friday, went out up to Stevens Creek Park and saw our county fire department's latest technology. We have a satellite relay station on wheels that could be picked up by a helicopter, landed anywhere, has two double battery packs that can last like 48 hours, it's pretty much bulletproof and fireproof, and they have a cool trailer with all the mapping technology, they had to drag me out of the room, I was so engrossed in the mapping technology. And then the last thing, I signed a proclamation with Liz recognizing the cinema theaters for their historical significance within our city, and one thing I found in researching their historical significance is I found that the Pruneyard case regarding free speech went all the way up to the Supreme Court discussing the ability to have free speech in public spaces on shopping malls, so I thought that was very interesting. Great job, you guys, tonight, good dialogue, let's keep it up, and we will see you all on, what is it, December 3rd, I think is the next council meeting?
I think it's the 1st.
Thank you, guys, I've adjourned, meetings adjourned.
December 1st.
December 1st, we'll see you then.